Okay, we are ready.
Okay. I have Mandel, the wife and the, uh, we, Mr. Swinney. Mr. Swinney?
Present.
Okay.
Present.
Ms. James Bruce?
There.
And Ms. McCorory?
Present.
Uh, Ms. Lannigan?
Yeah.
Mr. Barry?
Present.
Uh, this, uh, Di-Fishiani and just the Warren R. Asp. So, public information, each project will follow, be following the following procedure in most cases. Have an explanatory project, agency comments, board members comments and questions, public comment. Members of the public will be permitted to speak for three minutes, please stay with me for three minutes. Uh, and if the person before you says that you want to say the exact same thing, if you want them to say, I agree with the person in front of me, we find, okay, we see whatever it is, then we'll move it on. Okay? First project tonight is Safe and Sound Site Plan, two forty-nine, Little Town Road, Coral River, New York. Uh, PRC has no additional comments beyond comments submitted by the agencies.
Mr. Chairman, may I make some one of the members?
Oh, okay, sorry. Chairman, I'll be recuse myself for this, this discussion.
I'll take this one.
Thank you, I'll come get your one.
Uh, please take things right inside it, please.
My name is Sean Quinn.
Donald Braden, attorney.
Jay Greenwell, Lансivick.
Did you just say, do a little update on the current status of the project?
Sure.
Safe and Sound Child Care has been serving the residents of this community since nineteen ninety-five.
Actually eighty-seven.
Well, I thought seventy-two. Well, I picked up another ten years. They appeared before the town's planning board, zoning boards, obtained many approvals for operating this childcare facility. As late as two thousand and nineteen, the zoning board granted the operation to be able to operate until two twenty twenty-six. It is noted that the zoning board in nineteen ninety-five granted this operation for additional use. The operators of the facility filed an application with the Louisville Department to update the facility in February two thousand and nineteen and was presented for the U of War. The applicant has worked with U of War over a two-year period. One time, they had an entrance on Lewis Avenue, the neighbors objected to it, even though some of the town departments wanted it to get away with. Client then came back with a modified entrance on Lewis Avenue. Again, the neighbors and the board found reason not to favor it. Again, listening to what the board wanted and what the neighbors wanted, the application is following the board's request any entrance on the new facility, it's only on North Middletown Road, with an emergency entrance on Lewis Avenue for the fire department only. This is a local facility providing the needs and services of the local people. You want to add anything to it, Sean?
Uh, yeah, I'll just add, um, yeah, this is a two-year project, we heard from all of them. All everybody's comments over the last two years, they didn't want, uh, to come out on Lewis Avenue. We took the board's suggestions, we made cul-de-sac, Jaden did, to make it fit exactly what everybody wanted. Again, this is the type of project that should be embraced by the town of Orangeville. There's some used stuff that's went there on that property. North Middletown Road is the gateway to Pearl River. This quarter could be beautifully developed and attractive. It's old school, it needs to be updated, and, um, I think it's a great project. And it's, it's the type of project that the town of Orangeville should embrace. And it's a development that has been in use for the past thirty-seven years, so, thank you.
One other thing, Mr. Chairman, by any, uh, the project has been scaled back to a ten-thousand square foot building from the previous application. And, uh, there will be no, uh, large school buses, uh, entering or leaving the property. There would only be the smaller buses and parents' automobiles.
Thank you. Any other comments? PRC has no additional comments beyond the comments submitted by the agency of the project. Officer Building, Zoning, Plan, Administration Enforcement, letter dated April eleven, twenty twenty-two. They have five comments. Uh, Department of Fire, Management Engineering, letter dated April eight, twenty twenty-two. They have thirty-two comments. Any other questions?
No, no.
We've gone through the conversation.
All right. Royal Engineering, letter dated April eleven, twenty twenty-two. We see the list, five applications. Close action provides sufficient drainage information and demonstrates that potential significant adverse attacks through respective drains can be mitigated. Therefore recommend that Safe, Safe and Sound Child Care Site Plan, vehicles drained subject to both project comments. Bureau of Fire Prevention, town of Orangeville, letter dated March twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. Uh, two comments. Rockland County Plan, letter dated March sixteen, twenty twenty-two. They have ten comments, uh, twenty twenty-four. Matlow, twenty, number eight. Matlow twenty-four is the case of the existing childcare facility. History may or may not be proposed, but is complete. And shall there be removed, an active construction site in a childcare facility, or have the land uses, site land materials denied to us, safety issues posed by the, uh, broken safety measures must be placed to separate construction activity from existing childcare. Senator Rockland County, seventh in environmental health, letter dated March fifteen, twenty twenty-two. One comment. Albert Gotti, Orange Rockland Phillies, email dated, uh, February twenty-four, twenty twenty-two. Uh, one comment. Rockland County Health, uh, dated three fifteen, twenty twenty-two, comments. That's. I think that's it, anything else, sir?
That's all.
That's all? Mr. Swinney?
Sure. Um, I just want to ask a question about James Lee's first comment about parking. Comment about how there were two different places where number staff and number of children, uh, in there. She asked me so much what is correct, so we know the parking is pretty much efficient.
Yeah, the, the, what's, what's listed now is correct.
What was that?
The one twenty-eight, uh, students and twenty staff. Um, it was originally, uh, larger, we did scale it down, uh, shaped it. It was, uh, twelve thousand eight hundred square feet. Um, there's adequate parking and, um, the enrollment in a school like this varies, so if they, if, um, you know, the, the parking is adequate, correction?
That's correct. The requirement for the staff and children that are indicated would be thirty-three spaces and forty-one are provided.
Part of my comment is that the special permit listed less amount and it's different than what the board reviewed for the special permit, so you're gonna have to return the special permit. That could be important to make the condition, but they, uh, renewed their special permit based on the existing site plan prior to going through this process. So, the special permit will have to be addressed.
But otherwise, you know, I appreciate you coming back to the plan that did incorporate our comments about, obviously, the Lewis Avenue, like, it's, uh, non-starter basically. And, uh, turn around the cul-de-sac and address that issue. How, how do you think your comments still affect the public?
Thank you, Mr. Swinney, James. Just, uh, just one comment right now, the, the engine's going out to Lewis Avenue. It's only gonna be used as an emergency access home.
That's correct.
Right to the bike.
It will be actually chained off. But, uh, Mandel mentioned the idea that we, we think it's a good one, instead of locking it, it would be carabiners so that they could be quickly in the event of an emergency. But it would not be used for buses, school buses, vehicles, it would only be used in the event of a fire access, TMT.
I also, boy, the board with the letter I spoke to Chief of the Fire Department, he gave it to me, I thought I had it with me tonight. He has no problem with it, he said gift, if somebody wanted a locker, what they would have, what they call a special box lock, the box lock will be there and only the fire department will have it here. But he also didn't mention, he said, the whole problem really, he said, the trucks will always come to Little Town Road. Very rarely come to that place. But it could be with a latch or it could be with a lock, private park, permanent private park, except seasonally.
I like the latch idea. Right there.
Yes, it's right now, uh, someone was, you want to address the public, let me say. Mr. Tom, and I, Bert was, uh, chief fire inspector, and the carabiner is fine, so, he does not have his comments. Thank you, stand to, it's Mr. Corry.
Thank you, Jim. Uh, yeah, I like that, uh, we'll keep the traffic, we'll be close. Um, I do have concerns about the landscape on the East Lewis Avenue. Yeah, how many trees are you removing? It looks like you're moving a lot of trees on that end. And you're only putting up screenage behind the play area. You put fifteen, you put seventeen above for the residents over there. It looks like you're moving a lot of trees along East Lewis. And, and you're not doing anything to help those neighbors out with the buffer? Not a buffer, I'm sorry, a screen, you can't say that.
Okay, we can take a look at that, I mean, there's, there is a necessity, that's where the stormwater mitigation ends up having to be in order to get to the low point, rain to this area, store the water, and then, uh, discharge it into the catch basin onto the, onto East Lewis. But we can certainly take a look at beefing up the landscape.
Yeah, 'cause you don't, you know how many trees you're remo- removing on that end?
Uh, I don't have a number off the top of my head, but.
It's a lot.
There is a change in grade there, so we have to take that into consideration, yes, we can.
I would be comfortable with more screen, you know? And, uh, the player?
Yes.
It's now my mistake, but it might have scripted.
Correct.
What's, what's that mean?
Uh, it will be a rubberized, uh, graded turf, um.
And probably structures or just, you go on our toys and?
They'll, they'll, they'll probably be, um, some, uh, climbing areas, well, you know, safety.
Yeah, it's only fifteen trees from the neighbors' property line, right?
That buffer line there, Frank, Jake, yeah, that, I believe that's.
There's a fifteen-foot probably there, yes.
You're pretty close to those neighbors.
They've always been there, they, they've been a little further in.
They've been there, but the schools.
A little further in the back end, and all the neighbors used to love the children's voices, that's, that's what they used to say.
They were also two hundred feet away.
I don't know about two, yeah, maybe about a hundred, could be a hundred.
All right. So, like, like I said, I would see more screen.
Okay.
And I, I still feel like that's too close over there, but, you have all this open space, I don't understand why you can't replace, remove the house and just build around the middle, where you got plenty of space and children in.
Well, it was, it was, that's the way the original design, to keep the school up and running and then lower it at the back.
Yeah, and then there's concerns about structure going on while that school is up and running too, as nobody's one of the. But, that's all I got.
That would be safe.
All right, that's all I got, now.
Thank you, Mr. Corry, Mr. Carey.
Good evening.
Do you want to talk to the wife?
Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes.
Um, just a couple, just, I, I agree with the comment regarding Lewis Avenue, certainly not, you certainly want to come off Middletown Road way, concerned about the traffic on Middletown Road. Uh, things do get backed up, uh, quite significantly, uh, on Middletown Road, especially during those hours of operation. Um, will you be operating twelve months a year or is this, uh, seasonal?
It's, it's twelve months a year, but again, it's, it's, um, you know, five, five, five thirty. There's gonna be noth- nothing, no, no traffic or anything, and the weekends. It's gonna be closed on Saturday and Sunday.
I'm sure what everybody's concerned about is getting to work in the morning.
Yeah.
Hey, so what time do you open up, eight o'clock or?
Uh, there's early, there's early drop-off, um, before the, but the school would be.
What's the window, like, in the morning, in the afternoon, the operational?
Operational, it's, it's, it varies, again, there's, there's a few in the morning, early drop-off, parents gonna work early, and then it staggers up to nine thirty, but mostly everybody's dropped off by that time.
I'm not still the kind of head.
Thank you, Mr. Barry. Okay, do you have a motion to open, uh, public portion?
Motion of the public portion.
Second, please, Mr. Corry. And he said, coming up, please come up, station agent, address for the record.
Mr. Chairman, just advise.
Oh, and you have three minutes, you will walk, game time.
Oh. Does it start after the heat cleaning?
No, it starts right in the floor.
Christina, I've ordered it on. This is what, that's the problem.
What's your name while you're turned in?
Christina. How?
Christina, what's your?
There you go. There you go, okay. Orf, Nidakis, O-R, F, it's a Frank, A, N is a Nancy, O-U, D is a David, A, K-I.
Hands up.
That's why I was saying, it's my time. K-I-S.
That's great.
One twenty-nine.
Thank you.
Um, so, it, it was also mentioned that, um, in the other meetings, why it couldn't continue to be a U-shaped driveway, and it was brought up, you know, what's gonna go in place where that existing building is that they're gonna end up tearing down? What's gonna end up going there that is potentially preventing a U-shaped driveway from going in how it currently is right now? Uh, with the emergency access entrance, is that like a hundred percent guaranteed that it is emergency use only? Like, it's not gonna be, if they end up enrolling more than a hundred and twenty-eight stu- uh, kids, not students, not a school, children, that they're not gonna need to go back later on and say, oh, now we need to use this as an entrance exit because the flow of cars, traffic, you know, has increased? Um, I also am concerned about drainage and flooding, you know? If anything fails with the system that they have in place, all the water's coming down to everybody, you know, who's at the lower elevation. Um, and I'm also concerned about sewage, like, can that, can the current sewage plant accommodate a building of that size? Also, um, I don't know if a new traffic study needs to be done, but the one that was done previously on February twenty-third, twenty twenty was when everything was closed and that's outdated at this point, and it was for a, uh, entrance, a right turn only entrance from Lewis, so I don't know if that needs to be updated. Um, and I think that's it. I am concerned that it's overdevelopment of the land and it's gonna cause unfair burden on the residents. Thank you.
Next up?
Hi. Incentia Dondero, ninety-three East Lewis Avenue.
Let's go, yeah.
D-O-N-D-E-R-O.
Ben Chandler?
Oh, yeah. Ninety-three East Lewis. In regards to the emergency entrance and exit, we had a fire on East Lewis just the other day. The cars could not, the fire trucks had a hard time getting in, stopped East Lewis altogether. As we had said in the last meeting, we have no sidewalks, and we, cars parked in the street on both sides, a fire truck or an ambulance cannot get through. We proved, you know, that was shown the other day. And we still don't have sidewalks, and the kids still play ball in the street, you know, and, and play tag in the street. It's be dangerous to put emergency vehicles that are shooting up and down or trying to. Thank you.
Hi, Jeanette Constine.
Okay, wait.
My name is actually on the, uh, on the plans.
Okay, spell Jeanette again.
Jeanette, J-E-A-N-E-T-C.
And your last name, Constine?
Constine, yes, A Charles.
A Charles.
I am directly behind the facility, my children actually went to Constine. Um, so, uh, love the people, just concerned about what's, what's made built. Um, my question was primarily, uh, what was to occur, and I was saying, uh, the play area is right behind my house. Again, don't mind the sounds of the children's voices, lovely, but the building itself, um, may be a little bit of an issue. Uh, my question is the, um, the play mat area, the rubberized play mat, don't know if it's going to be forced, um, to allow water to sink down below that play mat, because we just had a storm this past Friday, we had water in our crawl space. Um, the, the water table goes up, you know, it's a, it's a very, we still have water running into the street from our grandfather's main pipeline, um, from when we walked the house twenty-two years ago. Um, so, just, that is a very big concern, is the, um, the drainage, uh, and the trees coming down, which will help absorb that drainage, I mean, that water. Thank you.
Next. Anybody else wish to speak on this? Do I have a motion to close the public portion?
No, you got one more.
So, please come up.
Hello, this is Juan, how do you guys do?
What's your name?
Derata, D-E-R-A-L-T-A.
Is that your first name or your last name?
Yeah, my, my last name.
What's your first name?
Juan, J-U-A.
J-U-A, and what's your address?
One thirty East Carol.
One thirty East Carol.
Behind the school, basically.
Okay.
My only concern, I'm sorry if I wasn't here at the other meetings, the street, uh, basically, the main road, you can't connect it, entrance for three or four. When, in the moment's backup, it can affect also the three or four traffic, because the ramp is right there. So, my concern is also those cars in there affect that traffic load. But it has been considered that before, but it's something that I think should be addressed as well.
Anybody else wish to speak? Anybody else wishes to speak at this time? Do I have a motion to close the public portion?
Make the motion for the public portion.
Who's second? Mr. Corry's second. Just a couple of, uh, yeah, a couple of, oh, sorry, all are safer, all closed. Couple of things that I wanted to mention, we can go further. The, uh, fire hydrant?
Yes, I sent a, an email to, uh, David Juski and indicated that he was correct. A new hydrant would have to be placed on, uh, Lewis Avenue near the entrance because the distance was greater than the six-hundred-foot requirement, so he was correct, and we, we did, we agreed to throw a, uh, New York hydrant.
Okay, fine. Okay, can you remind me sidewalk in the medical building?
That's correct.
And that's, uh?
Subject to the county highway.
Highway, right.
Permanent.
Okay, sidewalks on, uh, on Lewis, like, Burt, on Lewis, that's the heavy eighteen years for the sidewalk, Burt, the law. Who was part of your property, is this?
I have a question.
Uh, excuse me, public portion, it's, it's, uh?
It's not gonna happen, it's not gonna happen, there's no sidewalks down on Lewis, so, there's just, there'd be detrimental if people are walking that far.
Right. Would people complain about the blocking any schools, just blocking all sides of the street? That's such a serious concern with emergency vehicles, I suggest that you go to the Traffic Advisory Board to ask for no blocking on both sides of the street to make it safer. That would be a solution to not only anybody coming up and down the street, but for emergency vehicle, to your homes included. The sewage, the, uh, Orangeville sewage, this is a small project compared to the larger ones. Our sewage plant has a large capacity, uh, and has full capacity still as well. The old building, land use, when that building comes down, what, what's gonna be put there? Going to be grass or?
Yeah, right now it's gonna be grass, there's an existing six-family, uh, in the front, that's gonna, that, 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 we intend to rename there.
Right.
And, um, yeah, there are no plans for it.
And as far as that building, yeah, when they break down the old building, to put it in a, uh, turn around or round or paint the area, they cannot do it without a permit from the building department, that's number one. Uh, the, we had it, the entrance on East Lewis for emergency vehicles, it's for emergency vehicles only, fire. And if there's something happening on Little Town Road that closes the whole thing, you need an entrance there, I mean, because there are children in that area, so that there are a bunch of adults that can run down the street, children that have to move, like, so, I, they have to come back and ask for a change in it, it's in the plan, once it's approved, it has to remain until it's changed by the town. And I don't see that happening as far as I'm concerned, that's my opinion, I would, I would see.
Mr. Chairman, I did want to answer the comment about the drainage. Right now, from the location of the school, the drainage, all goes westerly surface flow. When the new building is constructed, the concrete turbing and the building, all the building runoff from the roof, all that will be intercepted, and all of the runoff that is coming from the surface now, westerly, will be intercepted, taken into a large underground storage chamber down closer to Lewis Avenue, and then the hundred-year storm will be stored in that and then discharged very slowly so that the discharge doesn't indi- uh, overburden the existing piping. And then it will actually eliminate a lot of the surface water flow that is coming westerly, and then there's a very steep embankment west of this property, very steep, down to the backyards of the people on the side street. So, that will all be intercepted and then brought forward to the municipal system in Lewis. So, what you're saying is that it could improve, it will take water that is flowing from the surface and it will direct it out into Lewis Avenue, and it should improve it.
Under, under control, it's not a threat.
Right, right. Yes.
I interest you, a play area, forest or?
Yeah, it is, it is a forest, and, um, I, I think it's just like it is, like, if, uh, if it was, there's nothing there now, whatever would, would seep into the ground, and, um, so it's not gonna be an area that's like a, like a basketball court and it's, it's all, all above and it's, yeah.
And, and it's about a ten-foot elevation difference from the property to the neighbor's property, if you look at the, uh?
Probably, uh, probably.
It's about sixteen feet from the bottom of the slope.
So, the actual slope towards that, so I'm wondering will the, uh, added plants help absorb?
I, I, I would, I would say so, there's fifteen feet of, of, of buffer there.
Yes.
It's gonna, you know, even if it, if it rains, if there's heavy rain now, that water is still falling in that same area.
So, you, you could, you could only help.
Yeah, I, I would, I would say so.
And to address the, uh, the, the lady was concerned about emergency access off of East Lewis. Um, I know we talked about that before. I have experience in it, but most of the fire, the emergency access will come off Middletown Road. When this address comes in for a fire or emergency, they're gonna use the main roads and, and turn it, and that would be quickest access there. The emergency use would be, if, like, Mr. Mandel said, if there's such a backup on Middletown Road, that they would have to go that way. But the main way in wouldn't be through.
Or to use the emergency, uh, exit to leave after the fire is finished.
Yeah.
So that the, the vehicles don't have to turn around on sight and have this vast cul-de-sac, so that we could turn a fire truck around, we could have it spike the fire and then leave.
Yeah, just wanted to address some of the neighbors concerned.
I just did. So, there's, there's no chance that that emergency exit or entrance will ever become a driveway on the East Lewis?
Only people that could do that would be you. Right now, it's specifically built that way, and in fact, we have them on the clubs. You see their chain door and it's structured for that.
The, uh, the fence in the back by the play area, how tall is that? How tall is that? Eight foot?
Oh, I don't remember.
Eight?
Six feet.
Six foot?
Six feet, I think that's. Yeah, and again, with, with the East Lewis exit entrance there, we originally tried to do it that way because childcare, most parents have about a five to seven minute drop off time. Believe it or not, that's what they want. They like that. That's, that's what we were trying to achieve. But we listened to the residents, we listened to the boards, governments, and, uh, you know, did everything we possibly could to make everybody happy. We want this development to be good for Orange Town. It's a great use and it's gonna make the quarter very attractive.
Any other member report, have you got other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I do have one question.
Yes.
Jay, can you clarify, is there any current drainage mitigation on the site as it exists?
Not really, no. The, everything that comes off the roof just goes onto the ground and there's no curving containing any of the water directing it anywhere, no. It's just basically whatever falls there runs off.
Right, because back when the site was originally developed, there was no requirement for that.
No.
But there are plenty of trees.
Yes.
Suck up that water.
Yes.
So, if you're moving the trees, soon you gotta mitigate it.
There's no question. We are adding impervious area and we have to meet all the criteria and satisfy all of Bruce's comments as well as Mr. DeGennaro from Booker.
And we'll get more landscaping at the, uh...
Yes.
Yes.
You guys are coming back, huh?
Of course, he wanna give his final sentence.
I gotta see more landscaping.
All right.
Uh, third motion for the agency. Mr. Sweeney, second?
Second.
Any who's all in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion for a secret? Please.
Second? I'll second.
All in favor?
Mr. Chairman, that was a motion for nay, nay.
Nay, nay, I'm sorry, nay, nay. Will we go post on preliminary conditions? Yeah, okay. And Sweeney makes the motion, is one ready with the conditions? Conditions are? Officer Building, zoning, planning, administration enforcement, uh, has five. Long environmental management engineering out of Orange Town has thirty-two. Broker Engineering has five comments. Bureau of Fire Prevention has two comments. The Rock County Department of Planning has two technical comments. Long County Center for Environmental Health has one comment. Alphabadi, uh, Orange Rock Utilities has one comment. The Rock County Department of Health comments attached. And that's, uh, I think that's everything, okay? And, uh, it's the additional, okay? Additional landscape screening to be installed along Lewis Avenue.
And at the West Park.
And at the West Park, we want, okay? The, uh, the carabiner could be used to secure the chain on the East Lewis emergency access. And they have to return for a special permit?
Yeah, so if the ward suits fit the grant preliminary, they have to go back to CBA and they have to go to Acton Board as well, and then they wouldn't be returned for final.
I have a second for preliminary.
I'll second.
James, second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you very much.
This one statement, I was here for, uh, tonight, if you're going, permit has to be required. I suggest to contact the EME. It's springtime, we wait, summer comes, we have to wait in school. So, do it now.
Thank you, yes. Sorry, what? Heard this?
Yeah.
Uh, we did it for SQ, but not for this one. I know, he just mentioned that.
Okay.
He just said that.
Uh, wait a second.
Mr. Brown?
Done, done.
Now, one second.
Just one second. Just reopen one of the conditions of the plan for the end.
Everyone, we can't, we, we still have an active meeting, you just, thank you. Do you want to reopen?
Reopen, okay, do you have a motion to reopen? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Additional conditions is the placement of the fire hydrant on East Lewis near the entrance. It's five.
Right.
East Lewis, yeah. Okay, uh, motion to, uh, fire hydrant conditions closed.
Now, preliminary with conditions?
Preliminary, sorry.
Preliminary, you almost got it.
Well, it, it wasn't advertised for that, so you weren't getting it.
We have a second on that, motion for closing, all right? Mr. Perry, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Andrew, who you have? The first one, the second? The second time.
Andy made the motion, Barry second. Jay, do you have anybody who wants to?
I think so, yeah.
This is SQ?
Yes. SQ, anybody who wants to. Another Sean Quinn.
Jazz. Afternoon. Afternoon.
We emailed it tomorrow. They did have, they did, I forgot to bring it.
Yeah, if, if we don't get it, uh, this is new.
Oh, we did. So, I initially made it. You gotta get it.
Permission to leave into the...
Sure.
Yes, if someone can run and get it, that's great and we can continue.
Good bagging.
That's fine.
I just didn't know everybody else.
John Quinn, owner and applicant. James Quinn?
James, okay. Now, what's the fellow that just left? What's the fellow that just left?
Ryan.
Ryan?
Yeah.
Get all this? Uh, this, this object is S U B R A K site plan, upper flanks, ready plan review, located, Agent London Drive, Orange Burt.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Before you continue, can you announce that the escape, the request that could be postponed in case there's anybody here?
What was going on there?
Escape?
Escape, oh, sorry. Anybody's here for escape, it has been postponed.
That's a six thirty four hundred three oh three. They, they asked for the meeting to be postponed. So, they will not be heard tonight. They'll be put on another agenda.
Can I ask a question?
You can contact the office tomorrow, okay? And we'll answer any questions that you have, okay?
Thanks, Jay.
I just didn't want to.
Please discuss the project.
Yes, thank you. This is a, uh, an expansion of a, an existing, one of the smaller, uh, existing buildings in Rockport Park. It's on Olympic Drive. Uh, this is a, an expansion to accommodate diversified glass and storefront, which is Sean Quinn and his family's operation. They've, uh, they moved down in the city, they moved up here. They are struggling to, bursting at the seams in the existing building. They manufacture and test and then install storefronts, glass and steel storefronts and, uh, meet meeting, what's that? Greenhouses, skylights, that's a type of, uh, manufacturing. And, uh, they had received a preliminary approval from this planning board. They had gone to the zoning board appeals for the outdoor storage. Uh, and they had gone to Acton Board just recently and received architectural review for the, uh, building and for the landscaping approval as well. And we've gone through comments from, uh, the EME and from Broker Engineering and had, have done test pits, uh, prior to onset of winter and redesigned some of the for bay in combination to the stormwater rules and regulations of the state E C and from the comments that we had. And basically, we are here for final and we believe we, I mean, I see that there are enough comments from Bruce again, but I think most of those are accommodated by what the revisions that we made. Thank you.
Officer Building, zoning, planning, administration enforcement, letter dated April 11th, twenty twenty-two. There are two conditions. Long environmental management engineering, uh, letter dated April 8th, twenty twenty-two. They have thirty-one comments. Broker Engineering, letter dated April 12th, twenty twenty-two. They have five, six comments. Proposed application has provided sufficient drainage information that demonstrates the potential significant adverse impacts to the expected drainage and mitigating. Therefore, recommend that S U B R A K properties LLC, site name, approve drainage subject to the bulk project comments at this time. Bureau of Fire Prevention, letter dated March 29th, twenty twenty-two. Three comments. Rock County Planning, letter dated March 14th, twenty twenty-two. They have six comments.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would respectfully request an override by a number five. This was a repeat of a comment that they had made. There is a fifty foot right away affecting the westerly portion of the property. I remember, I worked on this job back in nineteen eighty-three when we did the subdivision for rental metals and it created Rockport Park. There's a fifty foot right away there. It's been there forever. It shows up in the title board. I don't wanna have to go through the aggravation of just eliminating. Whoever has it, if they have it, they have it. If not, I just don't think there's, it's worth the legal mumbo jumbo to get it eliminated, to even find out who, who benefits from it. I would just respectfully request an override and just let the fifty foot right away stay as it is.
Jay, it has no effect on the plan as proposed?
None. In fact, there's a, a stipulated seventy-five foot buffer, which is twenty-five feet east of the limit of the right away, so it's never gonna be touched. This is the fifty foot right away and this is the seventy-five foot buffer. So, as a practical matter, the applicant has no right to do anything in there.
The building that?
Correct.
And it's kind of like that since?
It's been that way since before nineteen eighty-three. Cause I remember doing the subdivision plan and that right away showed up in it. And the neighbor is the county sewage treatment plant and I, they may in fact be the beneficiary. I didn't even know.
So, it's the county, they're, they're gonna take it, they're gonna come take it.
Okay, well, we're gonna file, file again. Rock County Highway, letter dated February 16th, twenty twenty-two. One condition. Center for environmental management, Rock County, letter dated March 4th, twenty twenty-two. One comment. Alphabadi, Orange Rock Utilities, email waiting, February 9th, twenty twenty-two. One comment. Rock County Department of Highway, Street 4, twenty-two. Comments attached. I think that's it, Gavin? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, did you read Mr. Majewski's letter?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed one. It's similar to the last project, we have to provide a yard hydrant because the access to the back is, is more than six hundred feet. And I had sent a proposed location for a review and we can make that, if, if you're so disposed to.
Okay, it's, okay, condition number three, is this hydrant must be within?
Correct.
So, you're going to, it's going to be a hydrant?
We have to add a yard hydrant, yes.
And it's internal?
Correct.
So, you can make it a condition, Mr. Chairman, that you must obtain the fire inspector's approval of the location. You got the ten bucks in the cup, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, it's going, what, uh, what is it? Long Oak Texas calling.
Car warranty is required.
Apologies, apologies. Okay.
We can try and reach you.
Open that as an initial review. Okay, the, all right. Mr. Sweeney?
Yes, hi, no further comments, sign, call, consult.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeney, Miss Andrews. Just, uh, one comment about the, uh, the thirty foot truck. Drive through sixty, what does that cost? To load the trucks on the inside, you have to drive in from both end. They're not gonna be, when you're loading, they're not gonna be running or anything like that. Can I do, James? Mr. Corby?
Oh, thank you, Chairman. Just to refresh, I don't know if I was here for the original plans. What's, uh, what's going in in the proposed building? You're heading on to, uh...
Additional, uh, just, uh, extension.
Yeah, what are you doing?
We're, uh, architectural metal and glass. And as a, a subcontractor, we assemble, fabricate, uh, glass and metal. We fabricate, uh, metal, glass, storefronts, uh, railings, uh, anything fancy, fancy metal.
So, have, uh, wha, wha, what are the hours of operation?
Uh, we shop on one side, six thirty, and we, uh, call by about four thirty, five o'clock.
All right, and not a lot of truck traffic?
Just our own trucks.
Just your own, your own trucks?
Our own trucks, yeah, out of there.
All right.
Couple of deliveries, maybe two or three deliveries today.
And will the, uh, will, will accommodating fire inspectors tell us about the, what did it roll?
Yes, we have to go, we have to increase the aerial access route from twenty-five to twenty-six.
It happens, it happens a lot, right? You think we're calming now, but, uh, you need twenty-six feet.
It will be and I won't do it again.
All right, it's, it's, but it happens on all the lines, it's...
And well, it's also dictated by the, the height of the building.
Yeah, yeah.
So, sometimes in the early stages, they don't necessarily know what all the buildings...
We, we get this a lot, the whole sudden there's, oh, you need twenty-six, all right. But just, just want to note that, that won't affect any dimensional.
No.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Corby. This one I have.
I have no comments.
Thank you, this one I have, Mr. Perry, progress. The name is Mr. Perry. And, uh, just wondering. The, uh, the outside screen is an area that's uncovered. That's, uh, that's gonna remain so that you can put your product out there, see whether it's...
Yeah, testing.
Okay.
Most days it's testing.
So, all the stuff that's out there now, if we put it, okay, there's a fence there.
Yes. Yes.
Do I have a motion to open public portion? This one ahead, second, Mr. Cory, all favor. Open the public portion, anybody like to come up and speak on this project? Anybody like to come up and speak on this project? There ain't no response. Do I have a motion to close the public portion, this one ahead?
Yep.
This one, two seconds, all favor?
Aye.
Do you remember the board wish they had anything further? Uh, motion for lead agency, a re-encur or?
Yeah, you've already gotten the secrets, I just need a form.
Okay. Uh, motion for, re-encur secret. I'll make that motion. Miss Andrews, second, Mr. Perry, all favor?
Aye.
Okay. I'd like to move forward with a final at this point in time. Closing final conditions. Thank you, Mr. Sweeney. Officer Building, Zoning, Planning, Administration, Enforcement, two comments. Boston Environmental Management Engineering has thirty-one comments. Broker Engineering, six comments. Fire Bureau of Fire Prevention, three comments. And we have a condition at this point, yard hydrant will be installed, based, location will be based upon the approval of the fire inspector. David?
Yes, the override.
They haven't done that.
They haven't done it yet.
Rockford County Planning has six comments. You wish override?
We're requesting an override for item number five.
That will be based upon that build there, it's west of the buffer. And the current plans not show anything to be built there, correct?
That's correct.
So motion is override number five. Okay, Mr. Sweeney, you have a second, all second. This one ahead. All favor?
Aye.
Okay, on that table?
Can't speak up.
Okay, Rockford County Highway, one comment. Rockford County Center for Environmental Health, one comment. Albigadi, Orange Town Utilities, one comment. Hey, I think that's all, anything to open? All right, so I have a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, all favor?
Aye.
We have the final.
Very much.
You welcome, thank you, James. My table, can you see?
Oh, yes, okay.
Okay, it's a lot, it's a lot easier than.
Performance standards, yes.
This doesn't go to, tell me, send him in.
He'll be back, as soon as he comes back.
Yeah, as soon as he comes back, we're getting up here.
Thank you, all right, thank you.
I know, I can see we're in dynamic motion.
I know.
What, what you're seeing is.
I know.
The move from South Nyack, so we're trying to find space for everything. Hopefully, my next meeting will have it back in order. But there's, there's no outlet over here. So I got a. Yeah.
Is there any code?
Old Piggie, this building's a lot older than me, I can't tell you. It's definitely grandfathered in.
My next project on tonight's agenda is eight sixty-seven Route Nine W site plan above preliminary, three preliminary. Uh, please step up. Uh, sign in place.
What were names? Rhonda Smith with Leonard Jackson Associates. Uh, engineer. Sorry, can I have a? Rhonda Smith.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. John. G, A, E, R, T, O, N, M, N, S. McClure, M, C, C, L, U, R, E, R, E. George Balladio.
George, what do you want to say, George?
P, A, L, L.
Okay, what is that?
P's in Peter, A, L, L, A, D, I, N, O. Architect.
Thank you.
Do you need it?
Yep.
Good evening, I'm Rhonda Smith with Leonard Jackson Associates. Um, this is a, this, this, this project, eight sixty-seven Route Nine W, is on the east side of Route Nine W. Um, it's currently a vacant lot. Uh, the gross lot area is about one point five acres, but with the steep slope deductions, it brings it down to about point nine acres. Um, so the, in the R twenty-two zone, the minimum lot area is one acre, so we're, we are going to need a variance for that. This is a single-family house. Mr. McClure would like to move his, his family here to live. So we, we do have the pool as an accessory use, um, for, you know, for his family. Uh, we are going to need another variance for the front yard. Um, we have twenty-five feet in lieu of the forty feet that is required, and that's due to the steep slopes. Um, the farther you move away from the street, the, the bigger the building gets, the higher it has to get so you can get access, um, through there. The way it is, um, we've, we've got like, uh, an average building height of like forty-four feet now, um, because the back is so much lower than them in front. Um, this is going to take a lot of walls. Um, we do have, um, it is a single-family house with less than a acre of disturbance, so, um, the, uh, the SWIP is not required. We do, we will have to do zero increase in peak rate of discharge for the run-up for the new and previous area. Do you want to add anything, Mr. Collins?
Well, that said, um, like Rhonda said, you know, we can try to keep, um, the building tight and retain the walls to a minimum. We try to push it as close as possible in order to allow enough space for an efficient driveway and turning spaces. So we try to keep close and keep the, the building very narrow and more along the, the side of the, the road. So we try to be efficient in minimizing any, any disturbance to the site, um, property.
Any comments? Officer Building, Zoning, Planning, Administration, Enforcement, letter dated April 11th, twenty twenty-two. They have five comments. Boston Environmental Management Engineering, town, Orange Town. Letter dated April 8th, twenty twenty-two, they have twenty-two comments. Broker Engineering. Letter dated April fifth, twenty twenty-two, they have eight comments, I'm going to read the last one here. The application has not provided calculations to demonstrate the potential significant adverse impacts to the respective drainage to be mitigated. We therefore recommend that the eight sixty-seven Route Nine W site plan not be approved for drainage at this time, which means we do not give you preliminary. Bureau of Fire Prevention, letter dated March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two, they have two comments. Rockford County Planning, letter dated March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, they have eleven point three comments. Center for Environmental Health, Rockford County, letter dated March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, they have one comment. Rockford County Highway, Boston, March fourth, twenty twenty-two, two comments. Rockford County Stewart, District Number One, letter dated March twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, two comments. Rockford County Department of Health, letter dated three fifteen twenty-two, consent of town, Orange Town, planning to serve as lead agency. Uh, Rockford County Planning, three seven, twenty twenty-two, consent of town, Orange Town, planning to serve as lead agency. Orange Town, CBA, letter dated four, six, twenty twenty-two. Uh, consent of town, Orange Town, planning to serve as lead agency. Rockford County Environmental Resources, letter dated three, one, twenty twenty-two. Additionally, Rockford County Park Commission, project is out of jurisdiction of lead agencies, you have no further comments. Rockford County Health Department, three fifteen twenty-two, comments attached. Orange Town, CBA, letter dated four, six, twenty-two, no further correspondence to the site, consent of the agency. Land and community U V A C does not have any further comments. Suez, letter dated four, eleven twenty-two, no further correspondence to the site, consent of the agency. I think that's it, thank you. Mr. Sweeney. I guess we can just talk about some times we have, when, when we, you know, can't go further than, just like a conversation or whatever. So you said that, and yet you said because it's steep slope, you try to push the house up close, keep it warm along the driveway. Um, it's not super tall, it's, it's a challenging piece of property. You said you need guidance for the front yard and those kind of things. But I guess, yeah, drainage is going to be the biggest, um, problem, I guess, not the biggest, you would think that.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeney, that's it. Aye. Hello, Mr. Sweeney.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews.
Mr. Cory.
Yeah, this kind of development isn't uncommon for the area, based on the sloth, they have much to be promoted. Well, you got your work out here, before you come back, so, but we'll talk more when you come back. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Cory. This one ahead.
I have no additional comments on the, on the.
Thank you, this one ahead, Mr. Perry. Thank you, Mr. Perry. Uh, a couple things here, for your plans, you have to show the site, this is for both driveways, okay? Land needs will include the, I think it's, Mr. Sweeney, his comments, attention, attention, kind of details, drainage, height of nature. So we take the wall signed by a licensed engineer. Landscape plan has to show the new targets. If they were down any trees, you got to show that on the plan, what you keep and what you take down. Okay, so you have to show the, the slope of the driveway, to kind of set all of us.
Yeah, it is.
Okay, so you have to show that on the, on the plan. Uh, I would suggest, too, as I mentioned earlier, that every day for the turn fest, the EME, is the beginning of the summer, you're going to have to go to the hall. Or your building height. Now, how many stories is this, three or four?
It's three with the, um, it's not a basement, but the patio area, that's the third floor down. It's supposed to be filled dirt, or we're just going to lift it with concrete, so it's going to be, it's not going to be a basement, so it's really legitimately just three floors.
Can you provide a building section, so that's clear?
I have sections, but on this set here, what I provided, uh, the board was all the elevations, that shows all lines.
So I'm the one that's going to make determination whether or not you're compliant in the form of height?
Yep.
And if you're compliant with building code, if you're not compliant with the building code, you may have to put a fire suppression system, that's part of the reason for the question. So when you go through and look at all these other comments.
Yep.
We can provide a section, both cross-section both ways, so that we can fully understand that?
Sure, yeah. I mean, the front, when you're looking from the streets, it's only fifteen feet high, but the back drops the ceiling, so we average it out.
Try to show this, because otherwise, you need a fire suppression system. Okay, you have, you have plans to show, uh, silvers.
Yes.
Construction, it has to be reinforced with, uh, three bays, so that not be going to be steep slope. Uh, plans, plans that show the walls, heights, as we also know, we have the additional questions, so the builder's department will be expecting this. Need, uh, comments, rest of the board? Okay, uh, this time, a motion to open the public. Motion to open the public, Andrews. Mr. Perry, second, all favor?
Aye.
Does anybody in the public here who would like to speak in our position, please come up. Stage A, you're dressed, and you have three minutes.
Thanks, uh, Marisa, Marisa, M A.
Could you just talk a little louder, or is it on the mic?
Sure. M A R I S A, B R A S O R.
M A R.
M A R I S A, B R A S O R.
Yeah, B R A S O R.
Yes, Marisa.
And your address?
Uh, two eight five River Road.
Okay.
So I just wanted to be noted, I have a couple of concerns, mostly about the downstream mountain impacts for the people who live below the Esposito Trail and River Road. And it concerns stormwater mitigation issues and the drainage runoff, as well as like impacts on topsoil and mud and tree cover development. So I just wanted to be, um, noted that with the frequency and intensity of rainstorms as of late, all of the water runoff coming down from Nine W through the Esposito Trail onto River Road has had significant flooding impacts on all of the houses and the properties. And the county is obviously investing significant money into redoing River Road and the drainage, looking at drainage issues. So I just want to make sure that whatever development is happening, as well as like many of the other residents, um, or in terms of whatever development is happening up top, that it's in sync and looking at the development and the infrastructure kind of mitigation and things that, excuse me, that are happening on River Road. I think the other thing is, there's a very large gorge down below the bottom part of this house going to Esposito Trail. And there's significant rocks, cover, things that could shift with significant impact that's happening from construction development on Nine W as well as water runoff. So I just, I think a lot of residents are concerned about what's going to happen during the construction phase and then once the building is actually placed, where is that water going to run off and how is it going to be, uh, connected to the drainage issues or the, you know, drainage of happening kind of along the mountain and down the road. I think that's mostly what I wanted to just kind of note here and to make sure that's taken into, you know, into consideration when the plans are continuing to be developed. Um, because there's just a lot of significant challenges that all the residents are having down at the bottom of the mountain. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak on this project? Anybody else? Do I have a motion to close the public portion?
Motion to close the public portion.
Second, Mr. Cory, all favor?
Aye.
Okay, as far as the drainage, they have, have a, uh, site plan that shows the drainage, dry wells, the water holes, what detection there is. That'll all be when they come back again, because they don't have the proof of the drainage yet, so. The Boston Environmental Management Engineering will be looking at it. They have, there are three faces comments tonight, it's all have to be answered. And then once he sees the drains play the big role, there's one comment. Broker Engineering, who stayed and go on the drainage, will be reviewing the drainage that they here did, and he'll make comments on that. Give them those, or anything, right? Yeah, uh, would you, are you looking to continue this at a P today?
Yes.
Let me ask for it.
Okay, yeah. I'd like a continuation to a future date.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, the date will be determined once.
Once we, you will receive the, and you have the review, yes.
Maybe want to call up Bruce about the.
Oh, absolutely, I am. I've got that in my notes.
Yes, you can do that, um, we're not having approval, so just coordinate that with him.
We can, great.
Thank you. At this time, we've got a table five minutes, right?
Can you hear me?
Just tell me, I'm worried about that.
Okay, sure. My name is Amy Neely, N E L E. I'm of counsel to Ira Mandl. His office is, um, Four Laurel Road, New City, New York. That would be Mr. Um, Corey Chase.
Yes, and if the audience cannot, to office, because we can't, it was up here, we can't hear.
Corey Chase, did you say?
Corey Chase. He's our traffic engineer. And Jesse Cooley from Colliers Engineering, even here himself. Okay, good evening. I'm sorry.
The next project on, we just, tonight, we're going to do, uh, since they vote the same thing. The first one is the W P P acquisition re-subdivision plan. Which is combining of three lots to one. The second one is the W P P acquisition site plan, which discusses the building, the road, traffic, everything else that goes along with it. So, we're going to discuss both. Uh, and we'll take it in the comments, and then, when we do vote at the end, we're gonna vote on each item separately. So they're not gonna be voted on together, but we're gonna discuss it together. Thanks. Regarding with the W P P acquisitions re-subdivision plan. Five eighteen, Route three oh three, at thirteen and twenty wide Mountain View, heavy, Orangeburg. P R C has no additional comments beyond the comments submitted by other rating proceeds fit for this project. Uh, also building zoning planning administration enforcement. Uh, letter dated April twelve, twenty twenty-two. Uh, they have five comments. The first comment is, the twenty twenty-one land use application received for the re-subdivision is incorrect. The application here suggested different copies from the site plan application. New application must be submitted with the correct information included in reference to the re-subdivision. So.
Yeah, so that's our land use board application, that is different than the L E A F that we're talking about.
Okay, so can we proceed on with this?
Yes, yes. It has to be corrected for our.
All right. Uh, Department of Environmental Management Engineering, regarding the re-subdivision plan, they have two comments. Letter dated April eight, twenty twenty-two. Broker Engineering, April eleven, twenty twenty-two. They have three comments. The application has provided calculations demonstrating potential significant adverse impact to respective drainage can be mitigated, we are going to recommend the five W P N Y R, three oh three, and three burdened mountain view in the site plan. That's, that's for later on. They don't say any comments regarding the re-subdivision. The Department of Land, Rockland County, letter dated March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. They have ten comments. Uh, comment number one. Department of Land and Board must confirm that this development requires area variance. Permitting that does not comply with the applicable new standards and instead is undeserved and these present as a result of the overutilization of these different specs. But, uh, are we gonna, is this going to require any area variance?
Changing? No.
More required?
It's not part of my comments.
Oh, okay. All right. Just that I wanted to know on Rockland County. Okay. Uh, Rockland County Seward District Number One. They have, uh, letter dated March twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. Uh, two comments, comment number two is, four subdivisions. Rockland County Health, letter dated three fifteen twenty-two. Uh, consent to the County Orange Town Planning Board Serving as Lead Agency. Uh, the Rockland County Health again, three fifteen twenty-two. No comments at this time, we send future correspondence for review. A letter from, uh, Emmanuel Law, P C, April sixth, twenty twenty-two. Think that's it?
Did you get the Suez?
I guess. I don't think so. Okay, and a Suez, four eleven twenty-two. Uh, no future correspondence to the site to be sent to the agency. That's it on, okay, good. And that's on the re-subdivision plan, that's providing the three lots. The second question?
Pardon me, Mr. Chairman, may I, uh, just a very brief statement on a housekeeping matter before we go on? Um, because we, we have received all these comments as well, some of them have enough time to respond as Emmanuel did in his letters last week. And some, we just haven't had the time yet, and we will. Um, uh, I assume, you know, there's gonna be time to go over these comments. I also remember that some of the comment responses said we had no objection to this board acting as lead agency. So my question towards this housekeeping matter is, did this get, uh, referred out with a notice of intent? And so you could therefore, and has thirty days passed, then can you declare yourselves lead agency tonight? Or can you only declare your intent to be lead agency?
We declare ourselves lead agency.
Okay, thank you.
Next item filed listed, the W P P acquisition site plan. Department of Southern Building, zoning, planning, administration enforcement. Letter dated April twelve, twenty twenty-two, has twelve comments. Now, just put a couple of things that, okay, we revise the, uh, the full environmental assessment form. Submitting, the directors require, yes. Number four, uh, no outdoor logging person, permitted except by permission of the zoning board appeal. Or the planning board, this permission may be given at the time of site review or the time of special permission to particular land use issue. Number five, no department's been in any required yard unless permitted by any board. The town agency having jurisdiction, this admission may be given at the time of site review. After this proposing trail stations, spaces, and sets of property, within five fifty foot setback. Third thing, no trucking movement ready to manage in the Midtown District. Two hours of living, we have six A M, barely time unless permission granted by the zone control appeals. The full P A F knows the hours, twenty-four hours, day, seven days a week. Okay, and, uh, and number ten, uh, subsurface drainage for commercial property should be placed underground and moved use of the venture basis unless demonstrated to the planning board as second condition for the sub system. Uh, Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, letter dated April eighth, twenty twenty-two. They have thirty-two items. Uh, item number fifty, the boat's grading plan shows regrading right up to the property line along east side of the project. Drone shall include help us to be done without disturbing the neighborhood of properties. And with the proposed steel fences, be there during construction as well.
And giving number five?
Okay, number five, okay. Although a twenty-five foot pond buffer is required, the Swiss states, they have to maximize the basin size to reduce the flow. Have provided additional water quality, the upper is reduced to about sixteen feet in the northeast corner of the adjacent property line. This is unacceptable. The basin must be designed to be large enough to handle required capitalization, capitalizing water quantity volume to require water quality volume, and to require New York State D E C and S M D F standards for a micro pool extending the ancient basin. If the basin cannot meet these three requirements without reducing standards, one of the two things must happen, we configured design to be said to reduce the size of the project. Uh, Rockland County Land, has, letter dated March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. They have twenty-three point two, uh, comments. Okay, item number five. The application applies the conditions of Rockland County having a law, letter of March eighteen, twenty twenty-two. As stated, I would have lost the second comment. Mountain view area is not a truck room, and a post driveway along Mountain View area shall be configured controlled to deter truck traffic using the roadway. Orange Town Department of Highways, has one comment. Uh, we need to be, please be advised, Town Board, County Orange Town Equipment Group to advance the construction of the Mountain View area, the upper replacement project at the intersection of Mountain View area. And move three oh three, Orangeburg by means of Town Board demolition. Number four, sixty-three, dated September twenty nineteen, that's within a year. Uh, Rockland County Department of Highways, two comments, they said comments, Mountain view area is not a truck room. Post driveway on Mountain View area shall be fitted and controlled, so some deter truck traffic passing through the Mountain View road. Set there for environmental help, Rockland County, dated March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, they have two comments. Rockland County Seward District Number One, letter dated March twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. They have two comments, one of two has four sub comments. A email from Jason Brennan, New York State Department of Transportation, they have ten comments. Uh, Rockland, uh, Orange Town zoning board appeals, March sixteen, twenty twenty-two. Consent to the County Orange Town Planning Board Serving as Lead Agency. Rockland County Department of Health, three fifteen twenty-two. Uh, consent to the County Orange Town Planning Board Serving as Lead Agency. New York State Department of Transportation, March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two. Consent to the County Orange Town Planning Board Serving as Lead Agency. Rockland County Health Department, three fifteen twenty-two, comments attached. Orange Town zoning board, March sixteen, twenty twenty-two, no comments at this time. Please send future correspondence for review. New York State, uh, Suez, letter dated four eleven twenty-two. Uh, no future correspondence to the sites of the sent to the agency. Land and Land Agency does not have any further comments. A letter from Emmanuel Law, P C, dated April sixth, twenty twenty-two, with nine pages. They have traffic impact study, dated January thirteen, twenty twenty-one. Revised November eighteen, twenty twenty-one. Okay, revised, uh, full E A F. Okay, okay, this is, uh, an email from Elizabeth Dudley, representing coupon habits of Orange Town, dated April twelve, twenty twenty-two. With the appendixes. Anything else?
Uh, there was a second email from Maria Passerati, too. Just agreeing with, with what those are.
Okay, good one. The email, Maria Passerati, dated April thirteen, twenty twenty-two, um, the comments. So, had zero five mentioned, dated, uh, March twenty-nine, twenty twenty-two, with five comments. Uh, Mr. Sweetie?
Sure, I'm gonna give a very brief, uh, synopsis, and I'm gonna turn it over to, um, my technical colleagues. So, um, we're here for a re-subdivision and site plan review of, um, the site that you know as Mr. Chairman, thirteen and twenty-one Mountain View, and five eighteen, Route three oh three. Um, it is, uh, the site of what was formerly, I believe, a while ago, a warehouse and more, uh, formerly a church. Um, and right now, it's in a dilapidated state. I don't believe that there's a functioning roof, it's not occupied. We're looking to, um, revitalize this and, and place warehouse space there. Uh, and warehouse space there. Um, a- as the, uh, uh, member Sweetie noted, um, we, uh, we were here before the board, I think back in February for a consult, and back in, uh, July for an informal, but this is our first formal appearance before the board. Um, we did go to the, um, we did go to the zoning board. Just get. Close, okay, that's right. We did go to the Z V A for determination, um, which was, uh, which was made. Um, we've been to P R C about two or three times. Um, so this is our first, uh, formal, uh, round, uh, with, with, with you all. We were here last week from P R C, where we got some very valuable feedback. Um, and, uh, we did do a see in our responses. You see Mr. Emmanuel's letter stated April sixth, I believe, of last week. Um, and they addressed, I believe, the planning comments on subdivision site plan, um, sewer, highway, and health. And I believe we're looking for two overrides, um, who knows? Um, uh, we did not announce an override of the first comment, um, because it simply says that the, uh, town must consider, um, which, uh, the zoning or whether or not a use variance or an area variance is required, which in fact, um, Ms. Lemon has considered, and, um, she has applied on that. Um, so, uh, the only overrides we were requesting were those, uh, set forth in number three and number six, which we can go over if you'd let, if you'd like. We also have some responses to some of the drainage comments. Um, we haven't had formal responses to some of them yet. Some of them have come in in the last couple of days, but we'll certainly have to have time for the next meeting. Um, but, uh, now that I know that this was referred out with a notice of intent, um, and you can declare yourselves lead agency, we would ask that you do do that this evening, if you're so inclined. Um, and with that, I'm gonna turn it over to, um, uh, my, my colleague, Mr. Cooley. We give an overview of the project, and we have Mr. Chase here as well to talk about traffic. He's our traffic engineer, we know that's a big issue here.
Hello, uh, Jesse Cooley with Colliers Engineering Design Engineer Record for the site plan. Um, as Amy mentioned, uh, we've been to this board a couple of times previously, kind of an informal, um, appearance. Tonight's our first formal appearance for both re-subdivision and the site plan. I'll just briefly go over the re-subdivision. It's three existing tax lots, you can see them up here. The main tax lot has access off of Mountain View Road. Uh, that is the one with the existing dilapidated building on it. The second tax parcel is on the southwest corner. Uh, it's an existing residential structure, uh, that's gonna be demolished. And then the third tax parcel is really, what I'll kinda call the appendage that goes out to, um, Route three oh three. So the re-subdivision is gonna consolidate all three of those lots into one lot. Then, the site is the separate application. So the three total lots combined, about thirteen point eight acres. Um, primarily in the L I zone, which is the eight acres, um, primarily in the L I zone, which is the, uh, two parcels actually, the, the home and the, uh, dilapidated building, former church, uh, are primarily in the L I zone, except for a small sliver on the north end of the property that is in the L O zone, none of the proposed improvements are within that zone. So, almost if you were to extend this line down, um, that, that's kinda where that L O zone is in this, this area to the north, and then this property, the appendage that goes out to Route three oh three, is in the C C zone and, uh, Route three oh three overlay, which was the, um, reason for our appearance at the zoning board. So, as I mentioned, the applicant seeking to combine the three lots and redevelop the property with a new approximately hundred and seventy-five thousand square foot warehouse building, with associated parking and loading, uh, maintaining and improving the driveway access out to Mountain View Avenue, and then adding a direct access to Route three oh three. It is, as I mentioned, noted that the building, parking, and loading is all entirely within the L I zone, and that the site plan is fully compliant with the bulk regulations, so no, no further manages are required. Yeah, the applicant is also proposing to land bank thirty of the proposed one hundred and eighty parking spaces, in effort to minimize imperturbative coverage, uh, for reference, even if the land bank's parking spaces are constructed, the lot coverage would still be under sixty-four percent, which is well below the eighty percent maximum permitted in the zone. I'll touch more on this in a minute as it relates to stormwater. As for site access and general flow, the driveway on Route three oh three will be a right in and right out only, likely the primary entrance as a result of trucks traveling south on three oh three. The existing access on Mountain View Avenue will be improved to allow trucks to exit via left turn only onto Mountain View, but also turn in for Mountain View. During the P R C meeting and in the, uh, fire inspector's comment letter, um, he notes that the fire trucks would be coming down Mountain View Avenue from the west. Thanks Cory. So, they would need to make the left turn in, he has requested that that curb be made a mountable curb, we had had previous talks with this board, um, at the informal meetings about trying, and P R C, about trying to reduce that radius on the westerly side, to prevent trucks from being able to make the right turn out. We are also proposing signage at that location that says all trucks must turn left when leaving the site. It is noted that this is the existing access for the site, which is in the L I zone, and warehouse is permitted by right, so they would be using this if it was redeveloped with the building that's there now and in the past. Also on P R C, and since then, a letter was provided by the Town Highway Department regarding the D O T planned project to replace the existing culvert at the intersection of Mountain View and three oh three. Cory Chase, the traffic engineer for the project is here, and will provide further insight into the traffic findings and patterns anticipated for the site shortly. I did wanna touch on the comments from the county planning department and the county highway about Mountain View Avenue not being a truck route, just briefly. That road is not a county road and not under their jurisdiction, and it is important to notice that this, uh, to, to note the distinction in the language that they actually use. The county planning says that the public driveway along Mountain View Avenue shall be configured and controlled to deter truck traffic from using that roadway, but the county highway says, shall be configured and controlled so as to deter truck traffic passing through Mountain View Road by designing the driveway as we have and putting the signage, et cetera. Our intention is to not have trucks turning right, they do not need to turn right, most of the trucks would be using three oh three to go up to the thruway for their main access, that's the main commercial corridor, so that's the intention, and the driveway is being designed as such. The applicant is adding the appendage property to put the driveway direct to three oh three to avert a lot of the incoming traffic in through that entrance, so that Mountain View Avenue will be used as little as possible, it will be for exiting primarily, most, that's the primary use for that conduit. So, I mentioned earlier that the lot coverage, um, is not close to the maximum, and I wanted to come back to that to talk about stormwater. As was relayed by the town and members of the public at prior meetings, this area is prone to front flooding, in light of that, in addition to the aforementioned land bank parking, the applicant is proposing stormwater mitigation that goes above and beyond the requirements of the town and the D E C. As Bruce notes in his letter about the reduced pond buffer, that's simply an offset from the buffer outward, and what we did was, we sacrificed that buffer to provide more detention within the basin, so the project is now proposing seventeen percent more water quality treatment than is required, and as that is the main design point for the site, as everything flows from west to east to an existing sewer system that goes out to the state highway, that's what's there via the parking lot collection system for the church, and that's where our detention basin is, it discharges during the one hundred year storm event, we are reducing the peak flows by twenty-five percent compared to the existing condition. So, that is a, a great benefit, and I certainly, we, we just got D E M E's comments earlier this week, I've had some initial conversations with Bruce, but I'm gonna go meet with him and talk about all of his comments as well, but our intention is to comply with all of them and satisfy his, his concerns. As Mr. Mandel read, the drainage consultants of the board only had three comments and did recommend the project be approved for drainage. The applicant is proposing landscaping, um, consistent with industrial developments and complying with the town ordinance, uh, it's a total of sixty-one new trees and eighty shrubs, primarily located in some buffering zones adjacent to the, the residential property, the, the one or two residential properties right on the southern side of the site, and then also along the buffer for the Route three oh three entrance. Then there's some others, which I think at P R C, there was some request to add some more on the northern side of the site, we can certainly look to do that as well. Singles for the lighting for the project, uh, which has zero spillage beyond the property lines, usually that is a comment that the county makes, but in this case, we do not, um, propose any spillage. And then before I turn it over to Mr. Chase, I did wanna mention one other, um, of the D E M E's comments, uh, from the letter April eighth. The request for the waiver to disturb greater than five acres at any one time, um, which, as you know, is a waiver that can and has been granted by the town in the past from the speed permit conditions, uh, from the speed permit with conditions, as Mr. Peters outlines in the letter, that comes with enhanced erosion control measures, and the requirement to perform two weekly inspections every, within a seven calendar day period for the time the disturbance is there, so that would certainly be a requirement. But, the reason for that on a project such as this is, if you restrict the disturbance to five acres at a time, it becomes very constricting, and then the construction schedule is expanded out by probably about twenty-five to thirty percent longer than it should be. So, in reality, by putting in the additional safeguards, which I will certainly, we will certainly work with D E M E to their satisfaction on those erosion control measures, um, to have it be a compliant site in that no erosion control will be, um, detrimental to the, to the existing stormwater system. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Chase to talk about the traffic, um, and then we'll have a answer for your questions.
Thanks, uh, good evening everyone, Cory Chase with the Front Dynamic Traffic, uh, we prepared the traffic impact study, the proposed warehouse development, as was previously noted, it's last revised November eighteen, two thousand twenty-one, uh, as Jesse mentioned, primary access to the subject property for trucks will be through the proposed, uh, right and right out driveway on Route three oh three, uh, the New York State Department of Transportation did ask that we propose an island within the driveway to further restrict those turn movements to be right in, right out, so this driveway design will be modified to provide an island, uh, within the current geometry, will further restrict those movements to again, uh, southbound by turn into the property, and then turn right out to continue southbound along Route three oh three. We'll also be maintaining the existing access on Mountain View Road, doing some geometric improvements to again accommodate the truck movements that Jesse mentioned, uh, the, the right turn egress movement for trucks will be restricted geometrically, and, and the intent obviously is given that three oh three does provide that north-south access to the thruway, that trucks would egress the site, turn left, and then again turn left at the signalized intersection to proceed north on Route three oh three to return to the thruway. Uh, we did again, as I mentioned, prepare a traffic impact study, and we have had consultations with the New York State Department of Transportation, and that's what resulted in the revisions to the study, uh, our initial conversations with the D O T requested an expansion of the scope to include three additional intersections, they also requested that we do a horizon analysis, so not only to look to the future build year, which is what we typically analyze in traffic studies, but to also do a twenty-year horizon, so we, we also analyzed the twenty forty-three horizon design here built out. Uh, the trip generation for the proposed warehouse building, it's speculative in nature, so no tenants have been currently identified, so as is typical, uh, we project the trip generation volumes based on data published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers in the eleventh edition of the Trip Generation Manual, which is the current edition of the Trip Generation Manual, those results are summarized on table two, which is located on page six of our report, uh, as traffic engineers, we focus on the peak hour traffic volumes, the weekday morning and weekday evening peak computer hours, we analyze those additional traffic volumes generated by the warehouse facility against those existing volumes on the adjacent roadway network to determine if there are any detrimental impacts. Uh, it's important to note too, that we also did provide a breakdown of those peak hour volumes to look at both the passenger car trips to and from the subject property, as well as the anticipated truck trips to and from the subject property, and again, that's summarized on table two, on page six of our report. Uh, as Jesse mentioned, this subject property was at one time occupied by, uh, buildings similar to this, doing warehouse operations, more recently have been occupied by a church, so we did provide a trip generation comparison between those two uses, that you know, if that church was to be reoccupied in its former configuration, that would obviously generate a certain amount of traffic as well. As I mentioned, we did prepare a pre and post development analysis, looking again at the signalized intersection Route three oh three and Mountain View Avenue, as well as the two signalized intersections to the south of the subject property along Route three oh three, to the north, we also looked at the unsignalized intersection of Route three oh three and Clemens Shaw Street, uh, based on the results of our analysis, with some minor traffic signal time modifications considered along the corridor, the overall intersection delays would remain within one second of overall delay from their current conditions. Uh, it's important to note too, that our report did include several pending projects along the corridor, we are aware that there are, uh, there are warehouse projects pending, so those are outlined on page five of our report, uh, there's the development along Green Bush Road, uh, the Bradley Hill Development, and then the Amazon Warehouse Facility, we're all considered as part of the background traffic in our development. Um, we did work with Jesse's office to review the onsite circulation, site access, and things of that nature, and being based on the geometric layout that's proposed, uh, the location of the parking for both employees and the tram loading stalls, and field it safe and efficient, circulation will be provided throughout the site. That's all I have for Direct, we have been answering questions to the board and the public house.
Sure, alright, a lot there, um, I guess, there's two things here, the, uh, site, the, uh, the, I mean, something that you probably have a sort of like, you're appreciating trying to do, you're trying to add, does a lot, it gives you a group of, we access you can, maybe get some of the traffic, uh, so I guess, just to make sure it's clear, so the, the whole thing where we're playing is that anyone, any truck coming south down View Avenue, it would turn right to the property, but to go back to the current, but the product to go out Mountain View in the left, go to the left, uh, reverse would be true if you're coming from the south, which would turn left on Mountain View, uh, so it's the property that you're mounting, you go back to the center. I know when we talked about the curving on View Avenue, tried to prevent you, trying to make the left turn out, talked about curving, trying to make fuel exit, go right on Mountain View, then fire, as Mark said, the lot that could be there, it was a, uh, curvy access.
They would be okay with that curb dimension, but what they want is something that their truck can go over without damaging the bottom of their truck, so the D O T column here refers to that as a mountable curb, there's a bunch of different types and styles that can be implemented, cause we understand that they're, that's a, that's a critical piece, fire safety's important, so we wanna make sure we provide that to them.
The regular truck from exiting from the right, that gives the fire car access.
Yeah, it'll look a little bit different than the curb as well, um, and then, up until his, uh, the letter from the fire department, he provided the dimensions of the trucks, so we're gonna run that maneuver as well to show, if, if it can make the turn without clipping the curb, then we, we will keep it a regular curb, we just have to run that analysis.
What's the proposed hours of operation of this warehouse?
So, the hours of operation for the warehouse itself are, are twenty-four hours, um, but as, as noted in, um, Director Slavin's letter, the trucks are limited to stopping at eleven P M and cannot be, you know, running, moving, idling before six A M, so there will be, it's possible that there will be a third, you know, overnight shift for the warehouse internally, um, but it, it won't include truck operations.
Truck from six A M to eleven P M is the maximum?
Correct.
How many trucks per day you think they can take out of the warehouse?
So, I don't have the daily truck volumes, I can give you the peak hour truck volumes, uh, we focus on peak hour truck traffic, because that's obviously, you know, the peak computer hours are the areas of highest concern, so those are contained in, in the table that I mentioned, table two, so it's six trucks in the weekday morning peak, and seven trucks in the weekday evening peak.
What about for the applicant himself, what's the, um, would the applicant, the owner have an idea of how many trucks per day in total could be down?
I can get you that, I can get you that information, we can do it, because it's speculative, there's no tenant, so they're, they're not gonna know specifically, so based on the data that we consult, I can get you the daily truck information.
You don't know what the use is yet, so I can give you a warehouse?
It's speculative type warehouse, yes.
We talked, we were talking about the fact that you mentioned signal modification three oh three, what modifications are you proposing?
It's just modifications to the existing traffic signal timing, so the, the stable implemented traffic signal timing, a lot of time it doesn't get adjusted for years at a time, so what we do is, when we're analyzing these projects, we evaluate the efficiency of the intersection, see if that green town can be redistributed in a way, uh, make the operation more efficient, so there were some minor traffic signal timing modifications that we looked at, that we would coordinate with the D O T, and assuming they're favorable, would implement those changes on the corridor.
You would make that a possibility?
Correct.
Uh, you, you mentioned, uh, the comments that I had about, you know, whose view is saying you're going to sleep there, that's why I had him put that up because of Todd, because he did have, he wrote it in the notes, unacceptable with the, um, buffer, so that would definitely have to be addressed. With, uh, Jane Slavin's comments, um, talk about eight-nine, the door that turns side, all trucks turning left again, if that curving will be, uh, before things are settled, and then, uh, Mr. Emmanuel's comment, if you guys, he, he wanted to comment back on a bunch of the comments, and he has to help to override, if you explain more why he wants to override number two about, you know, the zones and how there's, uh, who say that, must the, must the zone change from your area of use variance?
Right, so what we're looking to do is a re-subdivision to eliminate the lot lines to allow for this redevelopment, um, and, um, what the, the county is saying is that you should then go ahead and rezone everything, or you should get a use variance on those sections, um, of the property that were rezoned, and our, our comment to that is that we can't find anything in your code that would provide that, there are a lot of properties within the town that have split zoning lines, and we're not conducting any of the warehouse activity, um, in the areas that are not zoned for it, so that's why we're requesting an override on, on that comment. Um, the other comment, I believe, uh, Mr. Copley.
Just put it out first, that makes sense, is that, is she accurate there? Just to put it out first, that makes sense, is that she had right there? You asking me or?
Oh, I think I'm working on it. So one of my comments is, is the three zones that affect the three parcels are not actually indicated on the plans, so that needs to be shown on all plans. But they are correct in noting that the actual warehouse and the operation of the warehouse is all on the parcel that's the LI.
So the rest don't have to be changed?
No, there's many parcels in town that are split. In fact, Ira Emanuel had to address one right on the Mountain View, where the bagel store is, because that was split right in the middle of the site and there's two buildings. And you could have a restaurant in this building, but you couldn't have it in this building.
And quarterbacks are in that one too.
In that case, that was corrected. He had to go for the zone mine change, because I couldn't permit him to put the restaurant in if he did not. So he did that. He went through that process for that parcel and corrected that. So there has been development all along the 303 corridor and elsewhere in the town, the parcels are split, like they're two different zones. In this case, there's three parcels. The one that's on 303 is the CC zone and they're only putting the driveway there. Portion of the larger piece is split by LI and LO, but the LO portion is the north section and it, that's undisturbed.
So I picked out a few, was that a second one or a second?
Yeah, so the second comment was, I believe, Mr. Copley adequately addressed it in his comments. So that was county, the county comment about Mountain View Avenue being, not being designed for truck traffic and actually I don't need to repeat that comment. Thank you. So the comment of the applicant must comply with the conditions of the Rockland County Highway Department's Letter 418, 2022, as stated in the Highway Department's second comment, Mountain View Avenue is not a truck route and proposed driveway along Mountain View Avenue shall be configured and controlled to deter truck traffic from using that roadway. Again, Mr. Copley pointed out that deter truck traffic and truck traffic not passing through Mountain View Avenue at all are two different things. It is actually designed to deter truck traffic from utilizing that, I guess it would be the eastern, western portion, sorry, the western portion of the roadway. But our comment is quite honestly, the reason that we refer these things to the county is that they're supposed to look at these to, to look for things that are of a countywide concern. This isn't even a county roadway. Your board in its wisdom has zoned your town and named your roads primary, secondary, and whatnot to handle certain traffic. And now the government does handle a certain amount of traffic at that point. So we think that this is a matter of local determination, we asked for that comment to be overridden.
So if it's a local determination, I would say that if you follow Mountain View Road, the portion east of this driveway is in horrible shape and I think is a result of the truck traffic is probably in that portion. But if you go further west, it's in much better shape. So I think there's a correlation between the actual traffic and the road conditions. So it is going to start local.
So if I can interject here, I did speak with Mr. Dean this morning. The town roads, there is no designated truck route on the town roads. There has been talk about doing it, but as we all know, that takes traffic studies and all that stuff. So there is no official designation of any local road as a truck route. So I think that's part of the confusion.
I get understanding that just being on that road, definitely showing aware of how the trucks are, if you see a difference between one half of the road to the other, where they catch the truck traffic, it's disrepair, the other half of the road is not disrepair. So it is something to think about as far as development.
We were made aware at PRC and there's a letter from the Highway Superintendent about the DOT project that's supposed to take place there. We've reached out to them to learn more about that project and see what the plans may look like, so that we can work with them potentially, you know, for this project and that portion of the road there as well. So that's still something that's being investigated. And to, to your point, Mr. Schnee, you know, that part of the road is being used by trucks today, you know, it's unavoidable when you have commercial properties there, they're going to get truck deliveries and things like that. So it's something that we would look to continue to use for part of it. Again, the main truck traffic coming in is going to be for that extra driveway that we wanted to add to this project as, for that specific reason.
Thanks, Schnee. Just to continue with the truck traffic on Mountain View. You're not sure of how many trucks are going to be going down on that. You don't know how many there's going to be?
No, we do, again, as I pointed out in our study, we do do a peak hour analysis. So I've mentioned, you know, in an hourly configuration, what that truck traffic is going to be.
Right. My concern at the end of Mountain View is a bridge that goes over to Spark Hill Creek. If we add more trucks going over that bridge, who's going to be responsible for repairing that bridge if needed?
We can confirm that with Mr. Dean, but my understanding is that bridge is designed to handle the commercial truck whenever.
And it's being replaced.
All will have your opportunity to, again.
Yeah, the DOT is actually currently in a project to replace that bridge.
Yeah, so he did confirm that. And we can also ask him for that confirmation and writing, we can do that.
We just learned that at PRC last week, so we'll confirm that also. And actually, we were happy to hear it, because it gives us an opportunity to work with DOT, the town, in connection with this project, both in terms of time, and efficiency, safety, and all of that, to get it all done correctly.
What does WPT?
What is the application?
What's the acronym of WPT? What is that?
Hold on, let me see if I have a more, a more descriptive thing in the application.
Yeah, might give us a clue as to who the owner is of this warehouse.
Well, you step forth, the owner, all the, it's, it's, it's a, it's a part of all of the ownership information that was required in your application. The deeds for the three, were, were contracts and deed.
WPT is just, stands for Welsh Property Trust, but the owner is Blackstone, which is a, an interesting number.
What was that, that's what?
Developer?
I don't know if I can get her any, sorry. Amy, Amy, I'm sorry. Amy, you made reference that the property before this was purchased by, I guess you guys, was, there was a warehouse, begin with?
That's my understanding, I don't have personal knowledge of that. My understanding that was a warehouse and then a church.
The church was, the warehouse was made of the truck.
Yes, that's what I understand.
Let me just interject there. That warehouse was Beck &amp; Dickinson. They produce chemicals. I would like to see a study of the soil on that property, because that could turn out to be a Lowe's. Lowe's over here had a lot of problems with the soil and had to mitigate both before they built that building.
Well, I would expect nonetheless of this board during the secret process that they didn't ask us to get soil testing and.
Well, that's what I.
We heard in the beginning that if we're going to do per analysis, we should do them now, so we'll take, we'll take note of that.
Yeah, because Beck &amp; Dickinson was a, is a chemical company. It was in the early seventies to late eighties that it was there. And I don't know what's in that soil.
Well, that, that would be part of the secret analysis, I imagine.
How high is this building going to be? The last time you were here, I believe it was mentioned that it was going to be 43 feet high or something like that?
That is correct, 43 feet and like three inches.
Why so high?
That's, that's a typical warehouse height and we do comply with the height.
We don't know what the warehouse is going to be used for, it's just a warehouse, warehouse?
Correct.
Warehouse and distribution.
So we have, we have an entrance and an exit going out of 303. And there's an entrance, is, is it an entrance and an exit going out of Mountain View?
Left and left out, right? No, right in, right in, right out, left, left and left out on, okay.
So the trucks that are going to go north on 303 are going to use the Mountain View Road?
To exit the site.
To exit the site. Who's going to use, what trucks are going to use the 303 and exit the site and go south?
Any of the ones that come from the south and return in that direction would go?
So most, so let me see, I think most trucks that are going to come into the site, are going to come in both at 303 because they're coming from the throughway. So that means most of the trucks coming in from the throughway are going to go back to the, so that means all of the trucks are going to be heading out on Mountain View. And we don't know how many trucks there are. Yeah.
Again, I believe I.
Yeah, all you're doing is giving us the peak hours. We're talking about 24 hours.
Sure, and I told you that I'd be more than happy to provide that information, but from an analytical standpoint, we only focus on the peak hours. So the daily truck trip generation, as was just discussed, is limited from 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM. So those trucks occur over a very extended period of time in the day. We focus on the worst case peak hour and those are the volumes that are presented in the report, but be happy to provide the daily truck trip generation to the town.
We don't know how many trucks are coming in and out, because you have it directed. I mean, we figured at Amazon, they had 700 trucks coming in and out every day. We don't know how many, and these are going to be big trucks, 18-wheelers?
Better. But I will tell you that Amazon is a completely different operational warehouse than what we're proposing here. This is a speculative type warehouse, whereas, you know, Amazon has their own very specific truck generation for each of the facilities that it designs. It has substantially more employee parking, substantially more truck docks than what we're proposing.
Oh, I understand, but we still don't know what's going to happen.
We don't, and I'll tell you, from my experiences as a traffic engineer, the majority of the time we're proposing these buildings, they're on a speculative type basis. You know, the way that the market's working now, the buildings have to have a timeframe for when they can be delivered before they can secure a tenant, because of the market that we're in. The tenants are really looking for buildings to have a deliverable date. So with the, you know, should the warehouse be approved by the town, the date, or the town approval, the DOT approval, those are all unknown at this point. So it's, it's very hard for them to secure a tenant, not knowing when that building would be able to be delivered.
Corey, though, is it fair to say that when you do your calculations, though, you do them on a worst case scenario, peak volume, and you could extrapolate those numbers and provide the board with some more data?
Yeah, so to be happy to provide the word with the daily truck trip generation.
I mean, that building's big enough to put UPS in there. Would Gary think?
Again, UPS is a different type of thing. It's from a traffic engineer perspective.
So the building that you're going to build is not ever going to be rented to UPS?
The building that we're building is, is a speculative type warehouse facility. So if it were to be UPS, Amazon, things of that nature, they have a different traffic designation. So they're, they generate a different amount of traffic. And you're completely correct, they generate a higher amount of traffic. So this building isn't being designed to accommodate that. If those tenants were to go in, we would have to come back before the town, we would have to go back to DOT and get reapproval, because it's, that's not being assumed in our analysis, it's not being designed for on the site. So if you were to secure one of those tenants by chance, we would be back here talking about something different.
That's all I have right now with the comments and the public.
Thank you for standing through, Mr. Corey. Oh, thank you. Comment?
Oh, sorry.
That's it.
That's it, right, alright.
Hey, we're high-tech here, okay?
It's actually best mic. Alright, last off here, you know, I re-rolled the comments the guy I said before me. One thing I want to touch on, I want to touch on a couple things. We haven't mentioned that this property is in the 303 overlay. No one seems to mention that. And with that 303 overlay, it comes with certain concerns and certain restrictions. So just a quick touch on the 303 intent. Came around because I had already, the purpose of this study was to develop transportation equipment to address the safety and traffic issues. That's why the town and all the neighbors came up with this overlay, because they were concerned about all the traffic, safety issues due to all this development. So it's in place and it affects this property. And why I say that, it puts certain constraints on it. And I know there's going to be some debate with this, but I just wanted to call for the Illinois right here. That retail warehouse users include mini storage uses and distribution centers, which require or utilize a structure with a total combined square foot excess of 65 square feet on a single parcel shall be prohibited. And we're going to debate that. What they're saying is that large developments like this will have a negative effect on traffic safety and surrounding area. So they came up with this long, 65,000 square feet to limit the size.
Mike, if I can interject the ZBA, you made the determination. So that is a comment that was made early on.
I, I read the ZBA and they let it open to the planning board?
Yep.
To decide if it's an area variance, correct?
Correct. It's not an area variance.
They let it open to the planning board?
The planning board asked me, I'm the one that makes the determination for variances. So, you know, if the board says you want it to go back to the ZBA for an area variance, yes, you, you can do that.
Yeah.
Just so you're aware, the planning board and every other application, the first to me to make the determination whether or not a variance is required. And based on the decision of the ZBA, I was not able to do that.
No. Can you fill me in on why the distribution center is not considered, is not considered a distribution center?
Based on the definition, the presentation that was made to the ZBA, they made the determination it does not fit into that definition.
This definition?
Correct.
So the overall intent of the, do the overlay, to limit the size of the building. So I won't argue by 65,000 square feet, I'll argue that the intent was large. Developments like this will have a negative effect on traffic safety and the surrounding area. So I'll go into specifics. I can't imagine a truck leaving the site and making a right-hand turn going southbound on 303, or with that stop, with 50 mile per hour cars going, going southbound. Now that is a huge safety issue. A car, truck making a right, you know, you know what I'm getting at? There's no signal there. It's a stop sign, they're going to stop and try to get up to speed with the, with the traffic. I find that a big safety issue. And we have kids going to community college, we've got people going to school, we've got our neighbors. That's a huge safety issue for me. And, and what they're going to do is if they're not, if they're not, I don't understand why trucks go southbound, first of all. But it could be a shortcut to avoid the back, but this can happen on Mountain View. So then you go make a right and they're going to figure out how to make a U-turn and head back to the throughway. So they're going to go to the neighborhood, like they do, trucks all over the place. And I'll touch on your traffic study too, because anybody who actually lives in the area will tell you there's trucks all day up and down that road. So that's one, I should, safety issue and traffic. Now, I'll touch on the traffic too. The traffic side. I know when the project is big, we usually ask for independent consultant. Do we get any letters from an independent consultant?
We did early on, yeah.
Do, do we get?
It's been so long, I'd have to go back to our paperwork.
I, I would like to see a letter from an independent traffic consultant to look at this, because you were, you were rattling some stuff off and it's kind of going above everybody, you know?
Certainly for a project this size, we would expect this one to get their traffic consultant to review.
Because even as a, as a, someone that's not in that furnace, I, I did pick up a couple things in the traffic and I highlighted a few. The only time you did an existing traffic volume on this corner, 303 and Mountain Avenue, was November 17, 2020. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And those numbers were so low because of COVID and damage, that you decided to not use those numbers, correct?
Correct.
So you used data from the traffic study prepared by the warehouse across the way.
Correct.
And when they presented that, most we found many flaws in it, that we asked for an independent traffic consultant itself to, to address every issue there. So I think right there, you get yourself into, if you're not even using your own data, they're using somebody else's project data. somebody else's project data for your project.
Sure, that's a great question. So we actually had the benefit of using their data that had been revised to address ABR's comments. So we know that they, a review had been done on that study, that there was some additional information that we requested, some revisions that had been requested. We use that revised data. And, and just for the board's benefit, for the public's benefit, you know, obviously, we came through a very unique situation with the pandemic. You know, through that entire time, we didn't stop doing traffic studies, we just found different ways to do them. So, you know, we were doing counts to see what was going on, obviously, predominantly those volumes were lower because of everything that was going on. So we were looking at historical data, we were looking at previously approved data and other things to find ways to continue to do what we do. So we were aware that there was questions, comments, and revisions made to that data, and we did, you know, have the benefit of using that revised data.
So, I mean, Mike, and to answer your question, if the board sees fit, you can ask for the independent traffic analysis at the applicant's expense, which you have done with some of the larger applications. You can do that? We're not seeing it right here, but it's a big file.
With all the stuff, I, I can see it, and I don't think it, this is their first real presentation, so.
Exactly.
And I would request for independent traffic consultant, just to see if we need independent traffic stuff. I think that'd be the first step.
Need to analyze our data.
Analyze, and then if they say, you know, there's something wrong here-
Absolutely.
Then we do go to the stuff, we're doing independent traffic. Because this is gonna be traffic management, and everybody who actually lives in the area knows it. I know the owner, I looked him up, he lives in Minnesota, or some kind of, that's the average to the LLC. So he has no idea what this, this is gonna cost. You know, and we have a lot of concern, the neighbors do. So I, I pointed out how we need an traffic study, or consultant, but the land use code you use one-fifty, that pops up a lot. And you quoted the eleventh edition Trip Generation manual?
Correct.
So, and, and you know, they point out here that the shift to greater reliance on e-commerce and delivery service has resulted in an increase in trip-making at high-Q warehouse and related facilities. So the future of this facility is gonna be high-Q warehouse. According to your own manual that you use the traffic studies, correct?
No, actually, they, what they've done is there used to just be land use one-fifty warehousing in the old Trip Generation manuals. Through, since they've advanced the manuals and come out with more data for the various types of warehouses, they've actually broken them out into five categories. So there's no longer just one general warehouse category, but there's the one-fifty, which is your speculative type warehouse facilities, there's IQ, there's e-commerce type fulfillment centers. I know UPS and FedEx were mentioned before, but they classify those as parcel hubs, so, and there's cold storage as well. So they, all these different types of warehouses now all have their own categories, because they recognize that just having one category and looking at them all wasn't cutting it anymore because there's too much fluctuation between, you know, your, your standard smaller speculative type warehouse facilities, to Amazon, to UPS, to FedEx, they all have a varying degree of traffic generation, so.
So the warehouse code is more conservative?
It is. High-Q actually is-
And you use that because you want a conservative-
We do.
-approach to the traffic.
Correct.
Uh, I think that's it for me. I'll, I'll give more if it's, listen to the caller. But just to sum up, a lot of concerns, safety, traffic, and I, I can't, I can't see myself support this project right now with all these concerns now. No.
Thank you, Mr. Corey.
I was just going to respond on the, um, the comment about, I wonder why they just hear me? It's like my husband, it doesn't hear the octave of my voice. I'd just like to point out that it, it is in the overlay district because we are purchasing that piece of property so that we can get to 303, so that we can minimize the traffic impacts. And the, and the whole crux of the argument before the ZBA, um, and you can, I'm sure you've read the transcript, I was there that evening, actually, or one of those evenings, it's really surrounded the term retail. This is not going to be a retail warehouse. This is like a standard renting out different warehouse spaces to different end-users. It's not Amazon, it's not three thousand feet of Home Depot with, you know, another, you know, fifty thousand feet of storage in the back. So I, I just wanna, you know, just reiterate, we are not proposing a retail warehouse at this space, and I really think that that's what the overlay district was intended at getting at. But I completely hear your comments. We are happy to have a traffic engineer review our data. In fact, it only supports our record, and so if the board would like that, we would happily entertain that. Oh, yeah, cheers, sorry.
So, so I just, I'm just trying to understand the traffic study more. He said that, my question is, what is the basis of your speculative traffic study? He said it's not Amazon, UPS, he kind of just started talking about these other five categories. Like, can you give us an example of a similar warehouse, or end user, or something? It doesn't, I don't even know what is that, but it is speculative? I don't understand.
Speculative means that it's a, the tenants, so it's being built on a speculative basis. Given the size of the facility, the number of loading docks, things of that nature, it, it's going to accommodate a certain end user. It could be a wide variety of, but basically what they do is they transfer goods. So, you know, items are coming in on a truck, they're being stored in this facility, and then being reshipped out again on different trucks to be delivered to stores, be delivered to industrial manufacturing type uses, you know, anything of that nature. Whereas, Amazon and UPS and things of that nature, they're focusing on the transfer of small packages. You know, things are coming in in a big box, they're being unpacked, they're being packed in smaller boxes, going out in more trucks, and things like that. These facilities are typically, you know, you're storing bulk quantity goods.
Okay. Alright, thank you. That, that explains a little bit. It sounds like a lot of very large eighteen-wheeler trucks, they're not box trucks, that's more trucks coming out of this. That, that sounds what the intent is, my understanding that?
So we all have a design, just how many tractor-trailers, and again, that's gonna be the primary truck that's gonna be serviced in this facility, yes.
Okay. So, and I've agreed with everyone so far, I'm not gonna re-ski anything. The one thing I think is missing from a lot of your plans is like a, a bigger site plan showing the adjacent properties. You have two residential, you know, properties shown there. You don't show anything across from Western Highway, and how, or what their uses, and how this additional, you said, six trucks an hour, which is about a hundred trucks a day, possibly, you know, if I did my math, I might not have done my math right, but if I did my math right about that, you know, of how that's gonna impact the adjacent properties and the uses there. The residential of its businesses that are now not really getting deliveries or getting delayed deliveries. So I'd like a bigger view of, of what you're impacting, if possible.
So what we do usually is a vicinity map?
Yeah, we can put-
And certainly do that on a much larger scale for you?
That's not a problem.
That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Corey. Mr. Barry.
Great comments so far from the board. I don't have too much to add. I do have a concern of the tenant. We, we did talk about not being used from eleven AM for eleven PM to six AM.
For trucks.
For trucks, right. Like, the, the way I've seen this is, everybody, everybody who's entering the site is doing a loop one way, but they're coming in, they're coming in 303, they're exiting Mount View. They're coming in Mount View, they're exiting 303, right? So, um, that's one of the concerns I do have, especially since you don't know who the tenant is gonna be. You know, that all of a sudden you don't find a new tenant that, that specializes in midnight deliveries, you know?
Right, well-
And, and that certainly will affect the community around. So, I, I would just like to add my comments on top of everybody else's.
And, and I'm not, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but, you know, we, we'll have to rent the space to tenants who can deal with these restrictions. You know, we'll, our tenants will have to abide by the restrictions of the site plan in order to rent it. And, you know, we're in a little bit of a catch-22 in this conversation because clearly we can't go out and, and, you know, rent space that we don't own and have the right to use the way we wanna use it yet. So that's why we've got to go with studies and things like that. But, you know, happy to continue to provide the information. Thank you for all the input at this initial meeting, we really appreciate it.
Well, thank you, Mr. Barry. I have a few questions. Starting off with the site plan, as Mr. Corey said, I'd like to see the location of the footprints of the buildings that are adjacent to and across the street, also showing the driveway cutouts. So on 303 and Mount View, and you have, you have buildings there from the east of you. I'm page, trying to show the landscape plan on the east side. Heat screening along the driveway for the medical building and along the, where it comes out, if you look at, go back to that site plan, I'll show you.
Sure. Mr., you wanna look at this one?
Yeah, that, yeah, that one. If you look at the driveway, uh, yes, the left side of the driveway, you got a medical center, okay, and you make the turn to your left, well, on the, oh, oh.
Oh, in here?
Yeah, you have a diner over there. I'd like to see landscaping along there, screen it.
This is, the diner's here? Yeah, sorry. So here's the site plan.
Oh, sorry, we get that.
Sorry about that. This, this is 303, so-
Here we go.
Here, you wanna see some landscaping here?
Yeah, I wanna see some landscape, and along the driveway, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
This to ensure this Rockland County Plan of Twenty-two, we wanna shield that from the lights from the trucks and whatever else that goes along there. We also mentioned the consultation meeting of July fourteenth on page six noted that too, asking for adjacent parcels to block headlights. Right? On page fifteen, you can't, you show a truck washout along the driveway, 303. What is that?
So that's an erosion control measure, where before the construction vehicles would leave the site, they would have to be washed down on-site, and that said, and would be captured on-site and, and not, not allowed to leave, you know?
Okay. Is that oil and anything else that would wash the truck down?
Right, it's, it's a concrete truck washout, it's a DEC standard detail. And, you know, I'll work with Mr. P. Location, if he doesn't like that one.
Now, I'll go back to the Rockland County Plan of Two, truck lot, current truck drop and Rockland County Plan of Five. We've talked about that already. Now, you don't know the type of business is gonna be there at this point in time. We talked about the type of operation. Now, he said that the height of the building is going to be forty-three feet. At that height, it's usually a high-Q parcel, public meter house. And that uses automatics, if you go that high, that's what it usually is. And you use the land code, use one-fifty. The high-Q code being used, it should be code one-fifty-six, it should be used, uh, because of the higher volume.
That, that's actually not correct, so I apologize.
That's what we asked, and that's what one-fifty, twenty-five, one-fifty-five, maybe what she did, and put it to one-fifty-six because of the high IQ and more traffic.
Sure. So there's actually a different high-Q land use category that's actually generates less traffic than what we're proposing with the one-fifty?
So it also shows more?
There is, but those are parcel hubs, which again, based on what we're proposing, the parking and things on-site, we're not proposing that type of facility.
But you don't know what the direct response is, so quickly-
I don't, but I can tell you that from my experience, that all these speculative type warehouse buildings that we've built are forty-foot clear height, and so I'm sure Jesse would agree, all these facilities, they design as well, forty-foot clear, it is extremely typical for speculative warehouse buildings.
Now, you base the, the count from one-twenty-five, one-fifty-five, or any which wrote you said?
Seven volumes, yes.
Okay, now, who's standing, like, twenty-twenty?
Twenty-nineteen.
Twenty-nineteen, which is probably in the COVID.
Correct.
Okay, so that's what your baseline is, so that's a quite old number.
So we took those volumes and we applied the DOT growth factor to grow them to the current traffic volumes. We also did supplemental traffic counts in two thousand twenty-one, several additional asset interceptions. That was coming out of the pandemic, and we, again, as I mentioned, we look at historical traffic volumes and other things, we have the ability to review, to adjust accordingly.
Also, on your traffic plan, you say, as soon as truck traffic full movement, which is both ways on Mount View and Mount Avenue, you know, that assumption, the traffic count that was inducted then, so you're talking about, so that, that assumption is no longer even viable?
Yeah, I apologize if there's some carryover text in there. The driveway was now analyzed as being right in, right out. So at one time, with the original inception, we were considering full movement access to 303, it's been since revised and-
But rest of the floor, my thing is, it should be a new traffic study submitted that shows what you're talking about, rather than assuming have somebody else come in and work off. Thing is, it's no longer accurate if you're saying you're using full, is that sitting, you think, full movement?
Understood, sir. Like I mentioned, the analysis was revised, reflect right in, right out. So all the analytical values in the report reflect the right in, right out condition. I apologize if there was some text.
It still says it in there, so.
So certainly I'll revise that and change it, but it's not gonna change the results of the report, it's just gonna change that line of text.
First of all, you'd like to, they ask, you definitely want to know the twenty-four-hour truck track history. You can't make a decision based upon this peak hours. We don't know what the business is, so therefore we don't know what each hour is gonna break. It could be every hour will be peak hour, or only peak hours will be truck tracking, nothing else anywhere else. So if we're gonna make a rational decision, we have to know something like that. Okay, now, truck bays, that's, I'm thinking there's gotta be a lot of trucks on, you have thirty-four open bays, two inside bays. That's a, a quite good base for-
That's standard, industry standards, one bay per five thousand square feet, so based on the size of the building.
Those bays that I see along Route seventy-eight going in, and Route eighty-three going down from, from Harrisburg, those are major warehouses, you all have those bays. So we talked about a lot of trucks, we need every bay.
Now, again, it's industry standards, one bay per five thousand square feet, so based on the size of the building. You know, we provide those amount of bays really to provide flexibility to the operator, and more efficient operations internal to the quality.
Bays, which you have permitted. Let's go back to the comments on building, so-
Number four, Mr.-
Number four, thank you. According to the, for chapter forty-three, table three, point eleven, Calby Zone, comma seven, additional use regulations, number two refers to you saying as CS numbers four, five, six, CS comma seven, number six, no outdoor loading verse permitted except by permission from Zone Board of Field or the planning board, right? So you're assuming that you can have porters, but in fact, you have to have permission through that check. And why do we need another thirty storage spaces for trailers?
So it's a common thing, especially in this type of use where the hours are restricted for the trucks, that they would park the trailer there overnight and be able to leave it, you know, and not take up a space if another truck was to come early in the morning and need one of the bays, so.
That's a violation of, of, number five, no park permitted, any quiet yard is permitted by any court, county agency, amateur jurisdiction. This commission will begin at the time of the site review. Advocants proposing trailer station space on the east side of the property would require fifty-foot setback. And because you're putting that there, you're looking at your retention contract, the main quarter of the property, which is in violation or in contradiction to Mr. Peters, who said it would be twenty-five feet, turns back to only one sixteen, and then if you're digging up by the, right on the border line there, are you putting, are you trying to make sure that the, the Jason property is not affected because you're up on a burn there, looking down at the Jason property? I guess it's gotta be like ten, fifteen feet drop off.
It varies along that property line, but it's something we have to look at. And it's not all of those trailer spaces are in that setback, it's, it's a piece. And we'll look to see what we can, we can do to accommodate.
We're talking about thirty at this time.
Mr. Chairman, in reference to that, please look at number ten.
Thank you. Also, number ten, subsurface drainage system, a commercial property shall be placed underground, in lieu of use of detention basin unless demonstrated by the planning board, the site conditions for such a system, which hasn't been done in any of these cases. That's per chapter forty-three, article thirteen, section thirteen, point ten, sub fourteen.
So given the past discussions I've had with Mr. Peters as well, and the flooding that's known in this area, we do have to still conduct the stormwater testing, and we plan to do that in the next month or two, in coordination with his office. But we anticipate some high groundwater levels there, which is what we've seen in the area. So an underground system is not his preference, and would prefer the traditional basin, but- so an underground system is not his preference and would prefer the traditional basin, but we'll, we'll have to work with him.
Does that test the concrete?
Yes, no, a hundred percent.
Termination on which way it goes?
Yes.
Okay, you have stated, you have emailed day three twenty-eight, twenty-two. Number two, it said, they asked you to determine, there's enough room in left turn lane, three oh three, what's the part status of that, the discussions with the DOT?
So we need to obtain some additional survey at the intersection to confirm what the right of way is. I know that there have been discussions between the town and DOT to look at some sort of collaborative improvement at the intersection between the ongoing developments in the area, so we're in the process of working that out.
Also, number eight, they, they talked about providing truck turning diagrams, so three oh three driveway and the route three oh three mountain section, and that's got to show the traffic shows turning, and the original ones that we got, I think it's number you, shows track trailers in the opposite lanes, running over the, the Sparkville Creek. So we need those terminations to show all turn rates used for that. I think that covers, I think that covered five of our truck to, we have to check the five, make sure that they hold the same thing.
He did give us the dimensions for his truck.
Okay, so that's plus whatever the track and trailers have been coming in. Okay, we talked before, according to the four environmental impact statement, you're staring twelve point nine three acres, right? That's per, now even if you did got the commission more than ten acres, you still can't do it in one state, you leave only one state.
No, correct, we are going to work to prepare phasing plans that will phase the site, but we just need to go over five to be able to do.
You're going to have to get.
So.
Special approval on that.
Yes, we'll work with Mr. Peters.
If, if we have to give us a full site plan that shows the whole construction project, but you're going to have to give a separate plan showing what each phase does.
Yes.
Right? And that's based on, we've done the previous public diagrams, we did the same thing, this is what we do in the previous plans given before us. So we have to see that. Oh, you talked about the bomb coming in, uh, the red trucks and whatever going over. Now, the fire department has trucks that are running, as, as they say, eight hundred thousand, four billion dollars, they don't like tilting trucks, it's a quid damage truck, so you've got to find something, you know, a better way of doing it so that we don't damage the equipment.
The DOT has put out various different options that have different heights and different angles and different dimensions, so we'll certainly, whatever we propose there, we'll certainly run that.
I don't think getting anything over two inches at maximum.
Yeah, to, to your point as well, we want to run their truck through that driveway. If we don't need to make that curve mountable, we'll keep it flat.
If it's not a curve, they're going to say help.
Yeah, it's going to have to be something in between.
Or at least a portion.
Whatever, whatever they would, when we run their diagram, we'll then know the limits of what, what that has to be.
All right, I have no further questions for this time. Anybody from the board have any further?
Andy, you was a doctor.
I remember the last meeting that we had, there was talk about how you were going to construct these forty-foot-high concrete walls, and there was a discussion about working them at night. Have you revised that at all, or you want to work this twenty-four seven or something like that?
Well, I think what we intend to do is, per Mr. Van Dell's suggestion as well, put together the phasing plan, and in that we'll also include, you know, the hours of construction. I think, you know, we don't intend to be working all night.
Okay.
That's at least right now, so.
You indicate seven, seven AM to three PM.
Right.
On page seven of the full year.
Yeah, because previous discussion was that, yeah, you had mentioned that power would go from close at midnight or maybe it's morning or something like that.
The reason for that, I think that was stated in, in one of the letters that was submitted, was due to the temperature control and the need for these types of warehouses to have a very flat, smooth pour. If it's something that depending on the timing of the year, and obviously the other thing we have to consider too, is the project to replace the color, because that obviously is access to the site right now, so we have to work on that, and if the timing of the year works out well, it's something that where there isn't a lot of temperature fluctuation during the day, that pour can be happening in normal business hours, and that would be your.
Sounds like it needs to pour into one of the bridges there, but once you start, you kind of, you're all started, is that, we're not talking about something like that.
Yeah, so we'll work to provide more about that in the, in the phasing plans with the sequence.
That's okay. Thank you.
You mentioned a few times, uh, sorry, you mentioned a few times industry standard. I just want to point out, the three oh three overlay was put in place to curb these industry standard developments. So you're, you're taking vague and great, you're in an overlay that the intent is to not have vague and great, so you might have to adjust the scope of this project to align with the intent of the, the zone.
The zone area is in the LI zone. The only reason we're in the three oh three overlay is by getting the driveway, which should help the traffic here. So, so, so just so, for, for your benefit and the public benefit, if this project didn't have that appendage going out to three oh three, the where, this could still, this is still the same project, and everything would be going to Mount View. It's not in the overlay zones. That's, that's what it is, I'm not splitting hairs, that's the zone.
I understand.
I just want that to be clear.
You're correct, with the plan in front of us, you're in the three oh three overlay, so I have to look at the plan in front of me. And I tell you, that traffic study for that other plan wouldn't work out so well either, but we're looking at this one, and you're in the three oh three overlay. So that's a big concern for me, and I know everybody that put so much work into doing this overlay because they didn't want industry standard developments. All right, just want to make sure you're clear, make, make it brush up on what the three oh three overlay is. All right, that's all, thank you.
Any further comments on the board? Do I have any motion to the public, the public portion?
Actually, Mr. Chairman, if I can even just address something.
Sure, thank you.
Before we go to the public.
Okay.
I know we have a lot of people who want to speak on this, I know the applicant has asked for SECR today. From what I've heard, I don't know that we can do SECR, and if this is going to get adjourned, we may not have to be here till one o'clock in the morning. If you're going to do SECR in preliminary, we may be here till one o'clock in the morning. So this, this.
Please, we require.
This board has the right to determine if it has everything before it to do SECR. From what I've heard, there are lots of traffic study issues, there's potential chemical studies that need to be done, and drainage system issues, phasing issues, that I think the board may require before they do SECR, and if maybe we can establish that before the public speaks, it'll be a much more, less contentious meeting than it has, than it otherwise would be. And it is a type one.
This is a type one action.
Okay. So, and I know the applicant has requested SECR, but.
You know, I, I, I'm sorry, perhaps I, perhaps I misspoke. All I wanted was for the board to declare itself lead agency, we weren't expecting a SECR determination tonight. I mean, we don't need to set a public hearing, so, and I appreciate your, your words because the public should be aware that this is going to be an ongoing process, there's going to be a lot of comment. I imagine you're going to want your own traffic engineer to take a look at this, and other individuals, so all I was asking for is that the board declare itself lead agency under SECR, but it may not make a determination until it's ready to. I mean, I, you know, I might be splitting hairs or maybe that's just not your procedure here, but that's just.
But I guess if they declare themselves agency, we're back to having to have everyone speak, and it's going to be contentious, whereas if it's going to be continued, I think it will go much more quickly, and then you can come back with everything.
That's fine, we, like I said, we weren't expecting a SECR determination this evening.
Would you be willing to continue this? And we're still going to have everyone speak, so you know what to expect in the future, but it's not going to be as long. I don't think the board is going to be as conscientious if they had to make the determinations today. So are you willing to ask for a continuance?
Yes, certainly.
Okay. I think that's just going to make it easier.
At this point, should I call the board to see who wants the SECR, or we're not going to do it because based upon?
I think if they're going to continue it, I would not.
Oh, okay, so we just.
Do SECR.
I don't know that you have the, you don't have enough information to make a type one determination at this time.
I was going to say that we, what was based upon what the attorney said, we don't have enough information to make the proper.
Well, that's up to the board, I don't want to make the legal decision.
Okay, all right, look, we, the board then, we're basing it on, this is just my opinion, but I'll, I'll, I'll call the board, that we do not make a SECR determination, because there's too many things unknown, has to do with the location or the type of retention bond or underground. We have a chemical company that was on that location, so we should have some sort of soil samples, you take it on that.
Also, is the board, is your intent to ask for a new traffic study, intent to ask for an independent traffic study, intent to ask for an independent consultant to review the existing traffic study? Because those three things were tossed around, and I don't know that it's clear.
And to be fair to the applicant, they should know what they need to come back with, so they can't ask for them.
Okay, so we go with the, this, okay, just calling everybody here, we want to not do SECR tonight based upon the facts that we said.
You want us to say, no, we don't want to.
Yeah, no, yes or no.
Yeah, yeah. We're not doing.
Not doing SECR.
Yes.
I don't have enough information.
Then you need to tell the applicant what they need, but you can do that there.
All right.
So is it?
And also, what about, do we want a new traffic study or revised traffic study?
Or an independent traffic study? Those were the three things that were tossed around.
May, may I, may I please speak? I'm sorry.
Tell the official over to.
My, my. Suggestion, and look, I want as clean a record here as you do, believe me. So, and normally what we do on large projects like this is that you retain, where in your rights, you have the ability to retain your own expert, to ask us for an escrow, to pay the expenses of that expert, and then let that expert determine whether you need a new traffic study, you want us to update this one, you want us to revise it. Um, you know, that's just, that's my suggestion, of course, we'll do whatever the board determines.
And back to the town attorney's comment, again, I. I think there's a difference between saying that you're the lead agency of your SECR versus making a SECR determination, but.
All right, that's, that's fine, thank you.
Do we want to go with one of the three things? Revised traffic study, an expert came in for a brand new traffic study based upon some of the problems that we saw with the traffic study?
Can I just, just, I think it'll help clarify it for you guys. I mean, typically what happens is you, we submit this traffic study, the town will retain their own independent consultant, they would review it, issue a bunch of comments, we would then have a chance to respond, to address those comments. So what they're doing is they're reviewing this on behalf of the town, they're finding any deficiencies that they see fit, and then we get the chance to revise this and resubmit to try to address those comments. I think that's typically, I know that the application across the street, that's what the town did, they took the study that was submitted by the applicant, I believe it was AKRF, was hired on behalf of the town, they reviewed it, issued review comments, then they had the chance to respond.
Problem is, is that, that's my thing of agreeing here, you talked about full movement on mountain view area, and it's not going to be full movement.
It's, the mountain view area, the driveway's full movement.
Yeah, but that's, it's full movement then from, falling from Western Highway down to three oh three, that's full movement. Full movement aside from the driveway, you talked about full movement along mountain view area, so that.
That just means that the driveway and mountain you can accommodate all turn movement, so it's, yes.
That was using that road, but we're talking about the use of that road, it's either a truck route or not a truck route. If you did your traffic study, you felt about full movement along mountain view area, so it makes the assumptions on the traffic count, okay? It's based upon a numbers that are back to twenty-nine, and that's, that's going back quite, quite a way. We don't know the number of trucks even.
And again, really, if the town retains a consultant, they're going to, they generate some very similar comments, and then we get the chance to respond to them.
That's, that's, I think it's up to the board here whether they want to revise the new or hire an outside expert, so.
I think, I think what you're saying makes sense, but I think, here what the members are saying, I think what happened is, if we went that way, if we hired somebody to be here, and then you got a chance to respond to that review, I think some people here are still going to want to see independence, it's going to delay it even more. I think it's a special layer to get the independent review anyway. I think satisfying the comments I heard tonight, it's my better sort of clean, independent reviews, there's no question about where the numbers came from, what they referred to, when they were done. I think it just makes sense to avoid some substeps along the way, just go straight to independent review and.
Or we've got a better review of the current.
Independent sub step.
Independent traffic study.
That's my suggestion.
But who would be giving that traffic consultant the parameters for the study? Those have to come from a traffic consultant, you know, I, I guess then just.
We would hire a traffic consultant.
Right, who might say, I don't think a new traffic study is the best way to go, I think we ought to ask him to elaborate on this.
That's, that's up to us to make that decision.
Okay.
That's my call of the board right now.
Okay, I mean, I'm not, I'm not disputing that you should review our numbers, I'm just thinking that that's the most efficient way to do it, it's the traffic engineer.
Well, I think with everything that's happened in the last few years, the pandemic, you have, one of the last traffic studies we did was in, we did was in nineteen twenty-nine year, which was before the pandemic. And not telling what's going to go on from here, what's going to happen from here, I think we should do a, a, a new study, independent study on this, because in lieu of what's happened in the last few years, I think it'll be best.
So if the board can understand, and the applicant as well.
You want the applicant to do a new study, and then to us to do an independent analysis of that study, is that what you're suggesting?
No, I think what I, I think what I'm hearing the board saying is that they would like to hire somebody to do an independent traffic study of this whole thing, and that's fine. But just, you know, how it's usually handled is that at least that person will have the, you know, advantage of being able to look at ours.
If Mike can finish what I was saying, I'll explain.
Thank you.
So what we've done in the past is the staff reaches out and obtains proposals for the independent traffic study, that is brought back to the board, and also to the applicant. So you would have the opportunity to comment on the proposal of the independent consultant that the board may move to hire. So they, we'd have to bring that back to them and say, these are the three or four, whoever provides the proposal, you as the applicant have the right to make your comments. You either agree or don't agree, or, and say, I, you know, their traffic study is insufficient, and then the board makes a determination by a vote as to whether or not they're going to move forward with that, and select that professional.
You have no problem with that?
And then that's how we've done it in the past, so.
Yeah, I'd say with a development of this size, in that location, it should warrant independent on buying this traffic study. So I agree with you on that.
That's all I am.
Okay.
Sorry. Yeah, I agree, so that's what we like.
Okay, and, and just to clarify, so that's going to involve us leaving, getting proposals?
Correct.
Okay, fine, that's.
We'll get it, policies, you get the proposals, then we'll decide on the independent.
Maybe we should allow the public to have the comment.
And. There should be a vote on this, just so it's on the record that the board is in agreement, but as, as Paul is saying, if you want to listen to the public first, then we can hold off any.
Oh, we can do it on this, and then.
And then also, we need to let the applicant know exactly what they need to provide us, so we can add what we might receive.
We do that after the public comments.
Right, with the public note.
We can make a motion for an independent, that motion? This authority makes a motion for an independent steps, traffic study?
Well, right, for OBE, EPA to obtain proposals and report back. Well, right, for O B Z P A E to obtain proposals and report back to the board.
Okay, as you stated. Okay, you have a second on that?
I'll say.
The stand for six is all in favor? All right, all out? All right. All right, do I have a motion to open it to the public? Mr. Leonard hand?
Second.
Second, Mr. Barry. Can you please come up? You have three minutes to state your name and your address for the record.
Ladies first. Hello? My name is Thomas Finsterwall. I reside at 15 Mountain View Avenue.
Wait a minute, Thomas, I didn't get your last name.
Finsterwall.
Did you spell that for me?
F I N S T E R W A O D.
Yeah, go a little slower.
F I N, S Y S L I, T E R, W A O D.
Wait, still I get it.
Finsterwall.
It's pretty easy.
I purchased one house at 15 Mountain View Avenue in 1996, and at the time, what was, what we're proposing now?
Hey, you can't hear him.
Was a pharmaceutical testing company with a radioactive symbol on its sign. You remember that, anybody?
What was the name of the company?
I don't remember the name of the company at the time, but it was a pharma, it said pharmaceutical testing company, and it had a radioactive symbol on its sign. So, to your point, I really want that ground to be looked at, okay? Destroy the building as it, as it did at the time, anyway.
Further.
Oh, that's it. Presently, buildings, like someone said, the walls are up, but there is no roof. Six cars, six trucks an hour, just one every 10 minutes. All right, one every 10 minutes. Now, that's great if it's like 2:30 in the afternoon and there aren't a lot of traffic. 4:30 in the afternoon, a loo, not a loof, well, some are loof, but across the street at the, there's a, some sort of industry across the street, those people are pouring out onto 303. The school is out, they're coming to Mountain View Avenue at traffic light. You got up and down, traffic going north and south, it's a nightmare. And that's without six trucks an hour. Okay? I live right there. So, this truck coming in here and turning down this driveway, one every 10 minutes, every 10 minutes. Now, the other ones are coming back out this way, they want to make that left-hand turn. Good luck here. Good luck. That road is so narrow at that point, and if I were these people on this points here, I would be attending this meeting. If I were the people that own Del Arte, a very popular restaurant in New York, I would be attending this meeting. Traffic is a nightmare on that street. 9:00 in the morning, I get, I wake up, I get picked up, go to work. You hear the roar of the trucks going up 303, up and down. It's a nightmare what you're presented to us. And also, a one-story building being 45 feet tall, seriously? 45 feet tall, one-story building? Yeah. What is that? No office bed building, no mezzanine? Those all count stories in my book. Thirty, you make a good point, 30 bays, 30 bays of trucks standing there. Now, I live there, and these people up here live near my, okay? You got my point?
Yes, please.
This is what a one-story building from down line looks like. That building right there.
Camera's three minutes.
That is not a one-story.
Three minutes, sorry.
That's first.
Vincent Loopy, 106 Prue Street.
What's your, Vincent?
Vincent Loopy, UPI.
And what's your address?
106 Prue Street, well.
Okay, go ahead.
I want to start by saying I appreciate the board and all their comments. I agree with them all, in addition to the comments that were mailed and emailed. I'm overwhelmingly concerned about this project, as well as some of the others that are coming through the board in the near future. I'd like to start with the traffic. I agree, there should be a new independent traffic study. I'm very concerned about the distance from both entrances to the intersection. An average 53-foot truck is really 72-foot, because 53-foot is just a box. You put one or two of those at that Mountain View light and people aren't going to be able to get into the businesses there or their driveways, and you're going to be waiting at the light for multiple changes, even with an adjustment. I would like the traffic study, not only the end user, to take into account the high-end quality, what it can be for a warehouse this size. I'd like to bring up the overlay again. The reason why this has never been utilized and built the way it is, not, not using 303, is because it's not efficient. Making a 303 makes it more efficient, and it's going to create a traffic nightmare to have that kind of traffic going through either, either, either way. I would like to comment with environment, the environment with all these trucks, air pollution, water pollution, it's right next to Spark Hill Creek that feeds into the Hudson River. Most of these trucks are leaking oil, leaking fluids. Where is that going to end up? Drainage. They say they're going to address the drainage. The drainage can't be addressed because the current drainage isn't, isn't sufficient. Any more permeable surfaces is going to add to the, to the drainage system that currently doesn't work. So until the current one can be functioning, we can't add any more to that infrastructure. Enforcement, the 11 to 6 o'clock, so let's say that, that's, that's put into place. Who's going to enforce it? Does the town have the manpower to enforce that? Who's going to stop them from actually doing that? Who's going to stop the trucks from making a left when they're not supposed to make a left, from making a right when they're not supposed to make a right? The landscape, it's a joke what they proposed, that he, he mentioned some numbers for a property this size and a building this size. That's a joke. Nothing else to say about that. And I'd just like to take this moment to thank the traffic safety expert and the engineer for explaining how much of our town.
Alex Sullivan, 42 Arthur Street.
Did you say Arthur?
Arthur.
Yeah.
And blah blah.
Go ahead, Alex.
I just want to thank the board. I think you have done an excellent job of raising all sorts of concerns. You must have been reading my mind, and one thing I want to say about this project is far worse than I even imagined. The fact that they don't even have 30, the 303 in Mountain View on this, I mean, it's here. Anyone is ever in this area, which I am on a daily basis, this is my group going everywhere. I have two teenage boys. I have to continually back up into 303 when I'm in the left lane because of all the trucks coming from the other side. When they make that turn, I have to back my car into other cars coming on 303. This is a complete nightmare. And as far as the overlay zone and the comprehensive study that was done, I think it was back in 1991, I just want to read something. And they may think that they don't fall under the umbrella, but this is exactly what we wanted to protect our town against. The town, this is the legislative intent. The Town Board of Town in Orange Town has determined that certain areas of the town should be subject to land use and zoning controls consistent with the Route 303 plan. Specifically, the purpose of this local law is to create zoning and land use policies that will promote pedestrian and vehicle safety in the Route 303 corridor, limit the proliferation of truck traffic, and minimize left-hand turns, U-turns, and other turning movements, and overall traffic volume. Moderate and control traffic on Route 303 while recognizing that 303 is in large measure a regional artery for passenger and truck traffic. The main reason for doing that was to protect the community and the safety. This is a nightmare. And now the town has started a new comprehensive plan to which we all, or most people, have started to get involved in. And one of the things I found, found so interesting is, do you have any concerns about the recent development patterns in the town? 72% of people are concerned about the way this town is going and what direction it is going in. And then another question that was asked was, thinking about the town as a whole, for each of the commercial land uses and public amenities listed below, please indicate whether you think the town should, whether it should be encouraged, discouraged, no change, or no opinion. When it comes to light industrial, 40% of people think it should be discouraged, 31%, no change, and only 22% want to encourage this in our town. So, please keep this in mind. There are so many kids. This is, this is a direct route for our children, for our community, and it's just, this is so, so much worse than I thought. Thank you.
Liz Tuntley, 250 South Lake Bridge Road. 36, 36 loading docks. First of all, those should all be closed. I wanted to thank you for giving me the opportunity to voice my concerns about this monstrosity of a warehouse. This is next to Del Arte, a family restaurant. This is next to Marty's Bagels. This is not Bradley Parkway. This is something different. This is our town center. This is something, this is where my kids walk. My son goes to high school, Tappan Zing, my other son goes to Stones. This is supposed to be a safe passage. I want to ask the board a simple question. Are you here to protect our community? Because I cannot think of a worse plan than allowing 18-wheelers onto the Mountain View Avenue. And as you listen to applicant, you will hear them say, yes, some 18-wheelers get on there. That's not because they're allowed, that's because they're breaking their rules, okay? This is not a straightforward project. This is a piecemeal of three parcels of land sandwiched together to maximize a warehouse that does not belong, okay? I have been fighting truck, truck, truck traffic for the 12 years that I've lived here, and I will tell you, you know who doesn't show up to my house when I have truck traffic? That lawyer. Do you know who else doesn't show up? Ms. Laven. She doesn't come deal with truck traffic for me and try to fix my problems, but she's here deciding whether or not we should put this kind of project in our, middle of our town. You, I don't expect you to show up, I don't expect them to show up. You know who else doesn't show up? Our applicants. Do you know that every time I've reached out to any warehouse, Aloof Plastics, PDI, all these other people, do you know what answer I get from them? They don't say, oh, we're good neighbors, let's work together. They say, call OPD. And you know what OPD says? We'll get to it when we get to it. And that's not on them, because I don't want to let you another warehouse on them, okay? This is ridiculous. This intersection got graded as a D by the state, a D. Look at the history, okay? The old state gave this grade as a D, okay? This Mr. Chase, he suggested that.
That's not attacking anybody.
Oh, no, I was just going to say that, I was telling you that applicant first came in and suggested that we take 303 down to two lanes, suggesting that the New York State DOT supported that. Well, when I called Jason Brenner, who is a New York State DOT, he did not support this. That was a fallacy, just like everything else is a fallacy, okay? I'm asking that any development that's permitted in this area goes towards the square footage that's allowed, and that we look to the overlay and we look to what the town wants, and we think about clean water and safety for our community, okay? That's our job.
Thank you.
Yep.
Hi, I'm Vanessa Lakkman's, V A N, Vanessa, V A N E S S A, Lakkman's, L A P S and Peter, I N S, 659 Western Highway in Blockout and in the neighborhood of Orange Town. The community has spoken, and they are all against this warehouse, warehouse development on a large scale. Two petitions with up to 2,500 residents to date, the Orange Town Comprehensive Plan survey of the town, and even the town officials in their survey for the comprehensive plan are also against increased, increased warehouse development. The overlay was designed to protect the residential area, which is why the 65,000-foot limit was set. I'm not sure why we are here tonight contemplating three times that size. There was some mention that there's been some decision, but that is not clear. The public needs clarity here, and what exactly would require variance? What, I mean, if, if this is not, you know, appropriate for that variance to be applied, I don't even know what is. And at the time of the first comprehensive plan was written, this type of facility didn't exist. And so you can't contemplate, it's state of the art, right, at the time, you can't contemplate the future, and that's why the board is here, to protect our interests. And I thank you for all your comments so far and the, the interest that you've taken in really digging into the details of the project. Dominican is going to be bookended by the giant linen choice monstrosity and this as well. What, what kind of quality of life is that going to be for students? And what kind of attraction is that going to be for people wanting to come to the school when parents roll up and it's warehouses everywhere they look? The traffic issues, the air quality, flooding, I mean, it's just, it, it's an amazing amount of problems. We need the full environmental review as it seems like we're going to proceed with, but it needs to be contemplated, the new study from the D E C, the one that's not posted yet, the draft one that's available for everybody at this point to see that's been, I think, submitted to the Environmental Committee. We talk about the 100-year storm. I think we've had 600-year storms in the past year, so we can kind of throw all that stuff out because it's a new reality now. So please take a look at all of these issues. I do believe that the town has to come together and be heard together on this across all of the different boards. Nothing's been posted. Typically, you guys have been really good about posting all the details and all the letters back and forth, but we only have a set of plans tonight, and so it's really hard to follow all the numbers and letters and all of that stuff because we, we don't have the information. And so we can certainly all individually foil it, but that doesn't make sense. So please share all the information in a timely manner to give us the ability to, to respond to it. Thank you.
My name is James Cleary. I live at 20 Van Terrace, V A N Terrace, Park Hill, New York.
I'm sorry, what was the number?
20 Van Terrace, 10976. Cleary, C L E A R Y. I'm a retired defense attorney for a major U.S. insurer. I have defended numerous truck drivers. I've seen numerous traffic reports.
Sir, can you use the microphone because it is being recorded?
Sorry, sorry, I'm, I'm a little bit short. My first request to the board, having seen numerous traffic reports over a 24-hour cycle, is the traffic reports have to concentrate on the key accident times of any day, anywhere in this country, the morning rush hour and evening rush hour. Do not take a 24-hour cycle and divide into all the trucks in 24 hours because that won't give you a true analysis of what goes through in the morning rush hour and the evening rush hour. Secondly, if you look at this map right over here, there's a, there's a stop sign there where you turn right down 303. I believe I know 303 very well. I don't know Mountain Road well. Those truck drivers are going to have to come to a full stop according to that map. Now, these trucks can be anywhere from 20 to 40 tons for what's called a box truck, or one piece, or they can get up to 72 tons for the overseas 40-ton box on a 10-ton trailer with up to a 18-ton tag. That rig has to make a complete stop. Almost all trucks today have automatic gears. The gears go from anywhere from 1 to 18 to 1 to 21. So you're going to have a truck driver trying to get into the southbound lane of 303 where the cars on that southbound lane are doing hopefully 40 miles an hour. I don't know how long it's going to take a, a, let's be reasonable, a 60-ton truck to go from a dead stop to get up to 40 miles an hour. That's the first. That's the first problem. There's no on-ramp there, there's no on-lane. And these truck drivers are not going to run their truck on the dirt, because that will destroy their tires. Second problem is people coming down in this lane. Right there, lane on the, the lane on the right. Let's assume they're doing forty miles an hour, okay? When you first see a problem such as a big truck back in front of you, and when you're driving, as we all know, and you see a big truck back in front of you, it's very difficult to judge how fast that truck is going ahead, because you have no reference. So you're doing forty miles an hour. Miles per hour times feet per second is technically transferred at one point four seven, Williams one point five. When you do forty miles an hour, your car's traveling sixty feet per second. If you're awake and alert, it takes one second to see the danger. The danger here is going to be the back of the truck. It takes another second to apply the brakes, and a third second to stop. In three seconds, at forty miles an hour, you've gone a hundred eighty feet, and you slammed it in the back of the truck.
I didn't use my three minutes. Sorry.
You can take my three minutes.
There's no vote tonight.
Let's go with Jessica.
As many trucks are going to be going, especially during the pour, during construction...
Well, I have to get your name.
Jessica, who we...
Wait, Jessica?
His wife.
What's your address, Jessica?
One oh six Drew Street, Blockout.
Okay, go ahead. What's the question?
How many trucks?
Will be traveling into the site.
Traveling into the site.
And during what time span?
And during what time span?
During the construction, especially during the concrete pours.
Especially during the construction, especially during the concrete pours. Anything else, babe?
Okay.
Anybody else? Not hearing anybody else, so I'd motion to close the public portion.
Sorry.
You'll be notified when this comes before the, there's no decision tonight, not voted on anything.
Can you help when they put the notices up, like, they, the applicant, post their signs that this meeting is going to happen, about fifteen feet from the edge of the road? They're supposed to be on the edge of the road.
They will be posted.
Actually, they cannot be in the right of way.
That's right, they can't be in the right of way.
There is, it's not the right of way.
No, it is the right of way.
But it's not the right of way.
Sir, you can confirm with the office when they're going up, okay? We'll...
Okay, no problem.
And it is...
Thank you very much.
Show us it on the website as well.
Okay, now we've got to keep a listing of things that we're looking for when we come back.
I have a pretty long list.
The site plan, we, this was asked, you want to see larger site plan showing the buildings, the driveway cutouts on 303, on Mountain View Avenue, okay, both sides of the street, okay? You want to see...
Will there be, will there be management pieces listed or...
No.
Oh, okay, so we can maybe have a trust... Because I took notes while he was speaking, sorry.
That's, that's...
There's still minutes.
That's included, just so it's clear.
What's that?
We'll make sure that we're in the minutes.
Yeah, so let's, let's make sure that we don't rush, so that Kate can get it all down properly, okay? So the first one we have is the site plan, the buildings, driveways, cutouts, both sides of both streets with 303 and now...
Correct.
Okay, number two.
Number two. We want to see it as a landscaping, we want to see it on the, on the east side, along the driveway and the back of the medical building and the diaphragm, okay? We also want to see it along the driveway to Mountain View, depending, on the west side, opposite, what's his address for us?
Opposite Delarte Shopping Center?
Right, opposite of Delarte, and sweeping the residence there.
Okay.
Truck washout, okay. The truck washout, we're going to design it, what the DEC stands, and we've got DEME on that. Traffic report, we're, you know, we spoke about that earlier.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, what did you want to see about the truck washout?
Oh, no, no, the truck, the truck washout.
Okay.
It's on the driveway going to 303.
You want them to confirm it with DEME?
We want DEME, and applies with the DEC guidelines for truck washouts. Okay, we'd like to know the totals, twenty-four-hour totals for truck traffic. Okay, regarding the...
And Mr. Chairman, I think that should be supplied, actually, if you can do that sooner than later, via email, so that it can be included in the independent traffic study.
Okay, as soon as possible, so it can be included. Okay, talking about the, you had it sit down with DEME, you have to do the testing and everything, the terminal, you can do an underground retention system or a pond, and looking to move the pond away from the border. So it's not right on the border, giving the proper buffer there, as Mr. Peterson asked. Okay, that's DEME fifteen also on that, so it doesn't disturb. Also, DOT, we would talk to them about the terminal, if there's a left turn lane on 303, what about a coming back out of 303, some sort of entrance and exit lane, if it's wide enough to expand it there, or possibly a left-hand turn lane on 303 going northbound, so it wouldn't have to use Mountain View. Speak to them again, please. We also want truck turning diagrams into the 303 driveway, 303 and Mountain View, the, at the intersection, and also 303 and Mountain View at the turn into the, into the site. All right, we want to see the plans, also to show the phase-in, one complete plan that shows all the work, and each case has to have a separate distinct plan, show what's going to be done, because you have twelve point nine thirty-eight, which is much more than five, and much more than ten, so, that would have to be done, we need special approval for us to ten-eight anyway.
Mr. Chairman, there was some mention of chemical analysis.
Oh, yes. Thank you. Okay, nice supply. Also, want to source it, the chemical analysis, because we have Becker Dickinson, which is a chemical company, and a gentleman there also was talking about the testing, which is probably Becker Dickinson, but possibly of whatever they were using there, we have the terms, that site has to be re-mediated.
Probably a phase one done. Who should we coordinate with, where we should do warrants or whatnot?
DEME.
DEME?
Yes.
First.
Jesse, can you just CC me on that stuff?
Yeah, absolutely.
He might want me to have the...
Sure. He's made a DEC also part of that sourcing. Also, we, take a look at the filter fire, inspecting that, dividing the actions for fire trucks, is it going to be just the different concrete on the ground that does it, to probably Also, is that the retention system, any questions about the local ground? Okay, Mr. Swede, additional comments?
I think we've got the one I was going to say. Mr. McCrory?
As long as they come back.
I think there was mention of the bridge, at the bridge at the bottom of Mountain View, whether that was...
Okay, confirmation from your High West Department and the last book, we've done there. Yeah, I think at PRC, they said that it was actually, we discussed it at Town Board meeting this month, maybe, being awarded, but I think that DOT is paying for it, so they're selected. They did the RFP, they're selected.
The letter from Jimmy Dean? Yeah, there's a lot of moving parts, but he does say in this letter that the applicant should deal directly with DOT.
Okay.
Stay due to him.
Is he going to recruit that bridge?
Yeah, and it's a different department at DOT, that it's not, Jason Brenner's the one who issued the comments, and they always talk to each other, so we have to reach out on that. But I think Jimmy Dean put in his letter the DOT contact, so...
Right, the engineering department is a little different than the department that does the reviews or plans.
Yeah, so we will...
Also, I think you have to make it more...
Yeah.
Answer the question for us, temper the pockets a little, if you want, but temper the making of the D O T. This was mentioned originally, can it, can it, you know, three years wide for the air, where you could put everything over the D O T?
Yeah, we'll continue to pursue that.
And I think when we resubmit, maybe it's business, but obviously we come back to PRC first, right? So we would submit a full response letter with the comments, everything that's been noted.
Yeah, but we, yeah, but once, you can send a letter, I mean, with this comment, but we want to see these things on paper.
Sure, yeah, and where, I was just wondering, is it your practice that we'll go back to PRC, roll up our sleeves with your consultants, address those comments, then come back to you once you know?
That's entirely up to you.
I like to take advantage of PRC.
PRC is not mandatory, okay? Unlike, I know Clark Dennis and other towns, their tactics, and these are mandatory. In this case, you've already appealed for the board.
Right.
You can say that you've addressed all the comments to the board, resubmit, and you'll go to PRC and be heard two weeks later, or you can resubmit and just ask for a PRC meeting.
Oh, I see what you're saying, okay. So we need to go to PRC two weeks before being cleared for this board regardless, but we can ask if we want for a little extra...
Exactly. Because once you sit at PRC, if you made a formal submission, that's it, we can't accept anything further.
Got it.
If you come just to PRC for, basically, in this case, it would be a consult of an ongoing project, then we can, you know, give you that consult, and then you can resubmit, you know, four weeks later if you wanted to, or something like that.
Okay, thank you for that.
But just coordinating, Jesse, can you call?
Yeah.
Obviously, if you're coming in just for consult, we don't need as many sets of plans. We'd like to save as many trees as possible.
Okay, if you, you must ask for opinions if you'd like to, so you have to state that.
Yes, we have to, we're continuing to...
Okay, so you actually did before you...
So anything else, Jane, that we missed, this was...
No.
Anything for attention?
Nothing else, and I'd like to thank the board.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Okay. Before you go on, we're still writing down the dissent, I just want to let you know that we will have a minute.
Thank you.
I really ask you to look at that, Mr. Chairman, to make sure we got your comments correct.
Okay.
Just because there are so many of them.
Yeah.
Okay.
Are you okay?
Can we move on to minutes?
Yeah, I got this first and second on taking the minutes.
Yeah, okay, I'm going to second on the Stevens, all favor approval for minutes. I oppose. Do you have any other business?
Motion, Mr. Swede.
Have a little favor.
Who's second?
That was Mr. Swede's second.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciated.